Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Let's call the roll and establish a quorum.
Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Chenier, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
I do expect Councilmember Guerra and Ashby this evening, but Councilmember Harris will be absent.
We do have a quorum established tonight. Good evening to everyone and welcome. Tonight, we're going to have a very important housing workshop, which we will get to in a moment. But let us begin with the Pledge of Allegiance as we always do. And I would ask the young people from Congregation Benay Israel, part of the Camp Neffesh program, to please lead the city council in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. We're gonna -- so, we're gonna begin the evening on a very, very happy note. I want to turn it over to my colleague and fellow congregant, Councilmember Jay Chenier, to recognize our congregation, Congregation Benay Israel.
Thank you, Mayor. And could I have you guys come up to the podium? Come on back. So, I wanted to say two things. I think in the country, what we've seen over the last six to nine months is really a surge in the voice of young people around the country, really standing up for a set of values that they believe in. What these young people did is something similar. And Sacramento always wants to be a leader where we can. And what they did, which was carried in the Sacramento being, we have a resolution, was looked at a challenge, which was that young immigrant kids had nowhere to go over the summer, and decided that the camp that they were going to, which was called, which is the Camp Appenay Israel, that they would create a camp for 20, I believe, young --
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six, I'm sorry. It's a good number. I remember fifty-six. But that they would create a camp for young refugees, mostly from Afghanistan or all from Afghanistan, and that it would be free for those young people to come to the camp. We need heroes here, and I think these young people are very much heroes in the city of Sacramento, and not only our future leaders, but certainly our current leaders. And so, on behalf of the mayor and the council, and I know the mayor will want to say something, I just want to say thank you for really leading the way. What you did very much aligns with the values that this council has set forth, becoming a sanctuary city. I know that the congregation is also a sanctuary congregation and has been a leader there as well. So, I don't know who you want to speak a little bit. I also, Rabbi Alfie is here, our president of the congregation, Bina Levkovitz, some of the other board members, and Denise Krevins, who's our educator. So, just introduce yourself and then tell us a little bit about what you did.
Hi, I'm Lucy Beckett. And when I went on the trip to Seattle to work at a summer camp for refugee children, I knew I didn't want my service to the immigrant and refugee community to end there. So, I asked what I could do to help. The people at the International Rescue Committee told me that what they need most are financial donations. Now, as a teenager with no steady source of income, I was kind of looking for something a little more hands-on. In Seattle, I was so in awe of the fact they were able to set up a summer camp for refugee kids that I thought, why not do this in Sacramento? When I came back, I posed the question to our Director of Education, Denise Krevin, and Rabbi Alfie. Thinking it was kind of a long shot, I asked if we could host such a camp at our synagogue. And they immediately said, yes, let's do it, no questions asked. My next step was to send an email to Opening Doors, a refugee agency, if they'd be interested in starting such a camp with us this summer. I thought it was a long shot, but much to my surprise, they emailed me back that day saying, let's see what we can do. Though, at the beginning of planning this summer camp, we expected between 10 to 20 campers. We had over 60 campers attend and a waiting list. I'm hoping to be able to have more kids come next year. This camp really would not have been possible without the endless support from the community. All of our supplies were donated and borrowed, and all of our costs were covered by donations. Our camp was staffed entirely by teenage volunteers from all throughout the Sacramento area. Whether they were my friends who I forced into volunteering or people who found out about it on social media, we had over 60 total teenage volunteers, working anywhere from one day to the full two weeks. We had adult volunteers as well, who helped supervise, rent activities, prepare snacks, and more. Some adult volunteers went so far as to drive children to and from the camp, their homes to -- and their homes each day. I even asked the Sacramento Zoo if they would do a field trip for us, and they said, sure, we can give your camp complimentary admission. I'm so grateful to live in a city and belong to a synagogue where so many people are so selfless and willing to take action to support their community. So, thank you, Sacramento.
Thank you. We have a resolu -- Danny, are you speaking?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Danny Weisenthal. Up until the summer of 2017, I never realized how valuable my early childhood was. Seeing as I am an American citizen, born and raised in a white, middle-class family, I had access to many privileges and opportunities that appealed to my interests as a kid, including theater camp, soccer camp, Jewish Day and sleepaway camp, and several family trips. Yet, these are things I took for granted. But at the young age of 16, my perspective changed as soon as I became a camp counselor for the International Rescue Committee in Tuckahilla, Washington. For five days, my fellow counselors and I would learn about the refugee kids we would be overseeing. This included where they were from, their cultures, triggers and how to handle and understand them, possible trauma, why they left their prospective countries, the process of becoming a citizen, and so on. We were also told that many of the campers could only understand simple English phrases and words, let alone speak it. Given these challenges, I was pleasantly surprised by their comprehension and English-speaking skills. By the end of the camp, I had befriended several campers, two of whom I still keep in contact with through social media. Not only did we bond through similar interests, but we were able to communicate, learn, and become close through things like dance, sports, science projects, and more. It was so amazing to see that simple things like playing Gaga, drawing with chalk, jump roping, bubbles, could make these kids so happy. I was able to help give them their childhoods back. With this realization in mind, I immediately said yes when Lucy approached me and the rest of my confirmation class about creating something similar in Sacramento. I mean, our synagogue already had a Jewish Day camp and a connection with Opening Doors. Plus, Sacramento is home to one of the largest Afghani refugee populations. It was a perfect match. When the time came, I could not have been more impressed at how Camp Neffesh turned out. Lucy Beckett, a 16-year-old high school student, had created a jam-packed, multifaceted camp solely on volunteers and donations in just over a year. As a head counselor and song leader, I was able to see the camp from two perspectives. As a head counselor, I got to oversee fellow counselors, interact, bond, teach, and learn from the campers, as well as see the individuals grow, learn responsibility, and understand their capabilities when put into an authoritative caregiving position. As a song leader, I had the opportunity to entertain the kids while at the same time having a little fun of my own. Opening and closing circle were my two favorite parts of the day for that reason. Making a child smile and laugh is the most beautiful, affirmative, irreplaceable thing to receive. And the fact that I could do that for someone who came from a place of unpredictability, violence, and fear is such an honor and privilege. In closing, I'd like to thank Denise Krevin and Rabbi Alfie for giving these kids the opportunity to be kids. And also, I'd like to show some appreciation for Lucy Beckett and her family for being the wizards behind the curtain. But lastly, to Sacramento for her relentless battle for acceptance and diversity. Keep fighting and keep loving. Thank you.
Danny, thank you. Beautifully said by both of you. And I think Jay said it, I don't remember exactly how he said it, but I just want to repeat that the world is desperate for hope. And the world is desperate for signs that things are going to be okay. And people wonder whether or not we can all live together and work together and find real peace. And in many instances, it's hard to find the hope. Well, here in Sacramento, what you did here with Camp Neffesh and the publicity around it has sparked a lot of hope in people. And you'll never know how many people you, especially the young people, have affected in a positive way because of your inspiration and your work. And the adults did a pretty good job too, by the way, Denise and Rabbi Alfie and the board and President Levkovitz and everybody. But it's the young people. You're our hope. You know, we've fouled things up enough in this world. And what you've done, make it your life's work, okay? We recognize you, we applaud you, we appreciate you. And that goes, by the way, this is our congregation, so it's extra special. But there's good work going on in our faith communities throughout all of Sacramento and amongst our community-based organizations and nonprofits. And there are so many rays of hope. And so, let's work together. And let's make Sacramento the shining beacon of what the world can be. Thank you, guys, very, very much. We appreciate you.
Two quick things, real fast, and then we'll take a picture with all of you right down here. One is, I particularly want to thank Opening Doors, a wonderful organization in Sacramento dealing with refugees and partnering with you, I think, has been a great thing for our congregation, and appreciate all the work that you do. And for those who don't know, which is probably 99% of the people in the audience here, Neffesh actually translates into Seoul. So, this was Camp Seoul. It's important. So, if you all want to come down here, we'll take a quick picture.
Give me just a moment. Okay, we now move to our housing workshop. We have consent first. I always jump the gun here. Move approval on the consent calendar, is there a second? Do we have public testimony on the consent calendar? Okay. Been moved in second and no corrections. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. That passes on a nine to nothing vote. Eight to nothing vote. Excuse me, that's right. Councilmember Harris is absent, so that's eight to nothing. All right. Welcome to the city council, everyone. Welcome to our workshop, which is not necessarily a brand-new way of conducting the city's business, but a way that we intend to employ on all issues of import at the city in a much more regular way. Because it gives the city council, as well as the public, an opportunity to actually have a serious public conversation about the many issues that affect the quality of life in Sacramento. This, of course, is the second of three workshops to address the affordable housing crisis in our city. The first workshop, of course, several weeks ago, focused on funding opportunities to help increase the supply of affordable housing and to improve affordability. But building new housing is a short-term, a medium-term, and a longer-term strategy. And many residents are hurting now. For example, we know that in 2017, Sacramento had the highest rent increases in the nation. We know that 51% of renters are burdened by high housing costs, paying more than 30% of their income to housing. And we'll get into these numbers in some detail. We know, and there is some correlation, that we are seeing big increases in the homeless population, which rose 30% between 2015 and 2017. And we know that our eviction rate of 2.16% is two-and-a-half times higher than the statewide rate of 0.83%. And so, we need a strategy, or a series of strategies, to provide relief today. So, for this workshop, we're going to talk about, not just what it's going to take to build long-term, but what we might do to help residents stay in their homes today. And of course, we're going to talk about, I'm sure we're going to hear a lot, about potential unintended consequences of trying to do all that we can to keep people in their homes. Now, those of you who have been involved, and who are involved as stakeholders, know this, but I want to say it to the members of the public. Over the past number of months, I have used my office, properly, I believe, to hold numerous, mostly private discussions with both advocates for rent control and the business community writ large, who oppose rent control on this topic. And while the conversations in many instances have been positive and constructive, and people have listened to each other and relationships have been formed, I'm generally, I generally have a pretty good track record of being able to make the deal and to find that elusive middle ground. And I will admit to you here tonight that after months, many months of trying, I cannot deliver you a packaged agreement here, despite my best efforts and the best efforts of my team. And so, when in doubt, have a public discussion. Because ultimately, these issues are of such serious import that I want to lay out for you tonight the alternatives that we have discussed, mostly privately, where I would stand on these issues. And then hear from my colleagues and hear from the members of the public so that we can determine together what are the appropriate and necessary next steps. And so, for today's agenda, this is going to be the so-called run-of-show. We will first hear from Assistant City Manager Michael Jasso, who will provide greater detail, which we haven't had this conversation, about the current housing crisis. We will then hear from invited guests from the cities of San Jose and Oakland about their experiences implementing rent stabilization. Following that, I will make a 15-minute presentation, about 15 minutes, presenting some of the ideas that, again, I've been discussing with the stakeholders and what I, as the mayor of the city, could support. Then we will turn it over to my colleagues on the city council who have some ideas of their own and to ask questions of each other or of anyone, frankly, either representing the stakeholder community or from the representatives of the other cities. And then we will set aside an hour apiece for, let's call them, proponents and opponents of any form of rent stabilization. And I figure if we do this right, efficiently, constructively, listening to one another, respecting one another, that, you know, this will be out within three to four hours. And so, that's how I intend to proceed tonight. I'd like to turn it over to our new Assistant City Manager, Michael Jasso, who is also with Jennifer Gress on my staff, who's done great work on all these sets of issues in preparation for this evening. I thank you. And I turn it over to Assistant City Manager Jasso.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. As you've already pointed out, today I'm joined by Jennifer Gress, Special Assistant to the Mayor, and Tom Pace, Director of Planning and Development. And like you, I'd like to start by recapping a little bit from the August 14 workshop, where we focused on financing. And the reason for that is, we do firmly believe that in the long run, the most sustainable approach is for us to address our affordability housing crisis in Sacramento is indeed to increase supply of all housing for all income levels, but especially dedicated for affordable housing. But in the short run, given the population growth of the city and the affordability pressures at the state and regional levels, we know that we cannot solely build our way up to greater affordability. As such, I want to take a couple of moments to characterize the very real issues around housing affordability facing many of our city's residents. First and foremost, Sacramento's housing construction has not kept pace with its economic and population growth. Economic recovery has outpaced housing construction noticeably. We have more people moving to Sacramento than we have seen in the past. This past year, Sacramento was the fastest-growing of the 10 largest cities in California, and we're simply not building enough units to sustain that growth. Furthermore, as we are part of the overall Bay Area's economic boon along with its rising costs, these are spilling over into our local economy. Unemployment rate in Sacramento is 4.2. It's the lowest it's been in over a decade. This competition for housing, coupled with the tight housing supply and low production levels, has driven down vacancy rates and driven up rent levels. Over the past five years, only about 3,000 units have been produced in Sacramento. There are only 1,600 units completed in 2017, none of which were regulated as affordable. I'd like to focus on two slides, just to illustrate some of these facts. The first is the housing production that charts the number of units that were produced since 2002 through 2017. As you notice, the bulk of those units were produced between 2002 and the start of the Great Recession in 2008, 2009. Recently, we've seen an uptick, but not nearly enough to accommodate the growth we've seen in Sacramento in general. Secondly, this is coupled by the relatively, you know, substantial population growth we've seen. As I mentioned, we were the fastest-growing city in 2017 in the state. But even equally significantly, just over the past decade, we've added some 50,000 residents to the city. So, what does this mean? Well, rents in Sacramento have been rising fast while incomes have remained virtually flat. As published in January 2018, Rental Trend Report by Apartment List Incorporated, the city of Sacramento experienced the fastest-growing rent rates in the country in 2017 with an average increase of 9.3%. The median rent in Sacramento County, which includes the city of Sacramento, increased 18% between 2000 and 2015, while median renter household income decreased 11% during the same period when adjusted for inflation. Increasing poverty in Sacramento, stagnant AMI, and an increasing area median income and increasing rents have created a growing affordability gap between incomes and rents, demonstrated by a 55% increase in cost-burden renters' households between 2000 and 2017, according to the National Equity Atlas. And in the slide before, you see this clearly demonstrated, where you see the solid line is, in fact, the decreasing vacancy rate in our rental marketplace, and the bars represent the increasing average rents paid in the Sacramento area. So, over 27% of renters in Sacramento today are paying more than 50% of their income on rent. And I just want to restate that. Over a quarter of our population pay more than 50% of their rent, their income in rent. It's really a substantial number. 51% are paying more than 30% in rent, overall, so even more. But even more striking, however, among those families, below 80% of the area median income, so those most vulnerable that we have in our city, almost 74% are paying more than 30% in rent. So, if we look at the city, kind of district by district, the numbers are becoming even clearer. With every district but 1, 3, and 4 having over 50% of their residents' rent burden, thus paying over 50% of their rent. But even if you look at districts 1, 3, and 4, they're in the mid-40s in terms of percent, in terms of the number paying that are rent burden. We know that a diverse affordable housing supply is key to attracting and retaining workers and businesses, so reductions in affordability will impact our overall economic competitiveness and attractiveness. So, what's the result? A significant and increasing percentage of Sacramento residents are vulnerable to high rents and in danger of being displaced from their homes. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, from 2012 to 2016, from the American Community Survey, which is published by HUD, a majority, 53% of all units in the city, are occupied by renters' with, renter households, an increase of 27% since 2000. Based on the 2010 to 2014 survey data, 65% of Sacramento's renters' renter households had incomes less than 80% of the area median income, which is considered, kind of by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, to be low or moderate income. One of the results of this is our increasing evictions. The eviction lab found in, the eviction lab found in 2014 that found 2,044 evictions equating to about, sorry, found about five per day in the city of Sacramento in 2016, correction. This is the last time that information was available. This corresponds to an eviction rate of 2.16%, which is over 2.5 times higher than the reported statewide eviction average. The statewide eviction rate of 0.83% appears to be double that of cities who have just caused eviction ordinances. The average eviction rate for the five cities that have just caused ordinances is considerably lower. Take, for example, San Francisco, which is about 0.25%, Oakland at 0.77%, Berkeley at 0.23%, Glendale at 0.48%, and Santa Monica at 0.29%. Furthermore, in looking at data, one of obviously the effects of the increasing affordability, lack of affordability for renters has been increased homelessnessness. Excessive rental increases have resulted in increased homelessness, families living in vehicles, and displacement of low-income families in Sacramento. Recent sharp increases in the rental rate have been named as one of the key factors driving this 30% growth of individuals experiencing homelessness since 2015. There's been pronounced growth in homelessness that are unsheltered and people sleeping outdoors or on the streets, with over 2,050 reported in 2017 versus just 1,100 in 2015, representing an 85% increase. Now, to be clear, Sacramento is not unique with these challenges. Increased pressure for more housing production is felt nationwide with rents escalating at record numbers in most of our urban areas across the country. Of the 100 largest cities in the United States, 54 had year-over-year rent increases. Although recently, there does seem to be some flattening in market for year-over-year growth as it's stabilized or come down to about 1% nationwide, which is well below the 3.1% it was in 2017, or the 2.6% that it was in 2016, we know that in our marketplace, rising rents continue to pose challenges for many of our residents. So, on that note, I would like to turn over discussion and invite our panelists to come up to the front table. We're joined today by Rachel Vanderveen, who is the Deputy Director of Housing, for the Housing Department for the city of San Jose, and also by Michelle Byrd, who's the Director for Housing and Community Development with the city of Oakland. And I'd like to ask our speakers to speak to their respective experiences in their cities and their approach towards rent control and rent stabilization.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jasso. Lot of information. Do the members have the access to these numbers that you just described as part of a handout, or?
Most of that data, if not all of it, is in your package as handouts, but we can always provide clarity or additional information as the members seek.
After Ms. Byrd and Ms. Vanderveen complete their presentations, I'm then going to open it to the council for questions of either Mr. Jasso or the two panelists. Okay? Thank you very much. We want to welcome you, and thank you. We know you must have very busy lives and schedules yourself. I'm sure there was absolutely no traffic between Oakland, San Jose, and Sacramento. You glided up here, and we know that it's a sacrifice to come up here and share your experience with us. And whoever would like to go first, please go ahead. Yeah, you can use the podium, that's fine. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Rachel Vanderveen. I'm the Deputy Director for the Housing Department in the city of San Jose. And I'm here today to show, share with you recent policy updates to San Jose's rent stabilization program. to share with you recent policy updates to San Jose's rent stabilization program, including changes to the apartment rent ordinance, which is what we call in San Jose as our rent control ordinance, the tenant protection ordinance, which is our version of just cause, and the Ellis Act ordinance, which provides relocation benefits to tenants impacted by new development. So studies have shown, as mentioned right here, right before me, that when households spend more than 30 percent of their income on housing costs, they make sacrifices regarding other needs of their families, such as food and health care. The financial burden caused by the high cost of rent in San Jose has led to challenges, including displacement and overcrowding situations. In San Jose, it's an ongoing problem that many tenants spend over 30 percent of their income on housing costs. We have approximately 99,000 apartment units for rent in San Jose, and as you can see, 39,000 of those are rent-stabilized, and additional 48,000 are not rent-stabilized. The reason for that is San Jose's rent control ordinance was passed in 1979, so it's been around for several decades. And so what happened was, the way that the law, the local law and the state law work together, is that all development built after 1979 was not covered by our apartment rent ordinance. So we've actually had more rental units built since the rent control ordinance was put in place in 1979. And there's an additional 11,000 which are exempt. I just want to touch on that. What that means is, when we have rental housing that's built to be affordable and it's restricted affordable, they're actually exempt from the rent control provisions, just because they already are restricted in different ways. And it also does not include owner-occupied units.
I wonder if you might just, I'm sorry, just speak up just a little bit. I don't know if it's maybe centered, I think maybe if you go to the center just a little bit.
Oh, okay.
Or it may be my hearing that's bad, but go ahead.
All right. Okay, so I want to go over the basics of the apartment rent ordinance. So the most important thing to know is that the rent cap is 5 percent annually. So once in any 12-month period, the rent may be raised by 5 percent. There are additional pass-throughs that are allowed through the ordinance and others that are restricted in different ways. The rent limit determination is made by our City Council, and it is enforced, the program is enforced on two different ways. Number one, by a complaint-based program, where tenants come forward and let us know if they received a rent increase beyond the allowable rate, but also, San Jose has implemented a rent registry. I want to also just touch on a little bit of history in San Jose. So in 1979, when the ordinance was passed, the rent limit was set at 8 percent. In 2016, there was a lot of market pressure on the rental market in San Jose, and what happened was, this whole discussion came forward, and our community raised this issue. And what happened is, the City Council made a decision to basically make a temporary, put in place an interim ordinance that changed the 8 percent to 5 percent, and then gave us time to go back and work on the policy development. So in 2017, the City Council was actually presented with two options for the rent cap. So one option was the 5 percent, which they had determined the year before was appropriate, and the other option was to go with 100 percent of the CPI. And our City Council in San Jose decided to go with the 5 percent, so that's why ours is 5 percent.
Year again was that?
2017.
2017.
Yeah, in the last year. It was November 2017. All right, next slide. So just a little summary on how our program works. What the rent stabilization program provides to our community is various services to owners, tenants, residents, stakeholders, including daily information lines, policy development implementation, managing tenant and property owner petitions, and implementing outreach strategies. As you can see, in the past fiscal year, 159 petitions were filed by tenants, with three fair-return petitions filed by landlords. When the tenant files a petition, there's a mediation that is scheduled. If there's no agreement between the two parties after the mediation, then the hearing officer actually writes a decision regarding the case. If either party is unhappy with the decision, then that's actually appealed to an administrative hearing, so they go to another hearing officer, and they meet again and try to mediate. If they do not come to a conclusion, then there's an administrative decision that is written. When that decision is appealed, that can actually be appealed to the director for review, but then the decision is final. Beyond any appeal from our program, it actually is appealed to our county superior court. So in San Jose, we do not have a rent board. I wanted to just get to that point. So what we do is, we have a process within the program that determines that. And additionally, our City Council is the policymakers. We have a commission that reviews policy recommendations, but our City Council is the one who determines what the annual general increase is. So why is this important? We need to create stability for our families, because the disruption caused in their lives from housing challenges creates an endless set of issues for families. San Jose has had rent control since 1979 without just cause. What we found is that without just cause, rent control wasn't as effective, because no cause notices could continue to lead to people losing their homes and impacting families' neighborhood and support systems, children's education, and disrupting even jobs and other fabric that families build within a community. Now, with a lower rent cap of 5 percent in San Jose and just cause together, we have a stronger, more stabilization for our community overall. Another fact that I just wanted to share is that what we have found is that our just cause does apply to new development, so we have, the rent control obviously applies to everything built before 1979, but also is covered by just cause. However, what we have seen is that in the fiscal year 1617, before the decision was made to have just cause in San Jose, we had approximately 48 development proposals coming through San Jose. And after the decision was made, in the most recent fiscal year, we had 153 development proposals. So what happened in our city is that there was 48, we made a decision to have just cause that would cover all new development, and we actually had the number double, or almost three times. We went from 48 to 153 new developments in San Jose. And that trend continues. There's an immense amount of development pressure in San Jose. So I wanted to, again, give an overview of all of, we have passed three ordinances in the last year and a half, and so I'm going to just give you kind of the basics on that. The apartment rent ordinance limits rents to 5 percent and provides a petition process for both landlords and tenants who are challenged by the rent increases. We also have implemented a rent registry, which is now required for all landlords who are covered by the rent ordinance, and they must report their rent on an annual basis. This effort will increase our ability to monitor compliance with the ordinance itself. The tenant protection ordinance requires that all notices to vacate be filed with the city, and that one of our 13 reasons be included on the notice of termination. Our ordinance includes 13 just causes. The first eight are based on tenant behavior of some sort, and then the number nine through 13 are really based on some sort of a decision that the property owner is making about their property. For example, an owner move-in or a Ellis Act, which means that they are going to, in San Jose, it is most common that an apartment is actually demolished for the development of new housing. And so that is why a landlord would remove the rental units from the market. As I mentioned, in San Jose, there is a tremendous amount of development pressure. We are in a situation where land is becoming less and less available, and therefore, existing housing is becoming, let's say like two-story kind of apartment buildings, just kind of lower-density housing, is actually becoming very attractive to the development community to build new housing, to tear it down and build new. So what the Ellis Act ordinance does is provides a standard process to notify all of the tenants who will be displaced by this development, provides relocation benefits, and actually provides provisions for re-control after the new apartments are built. So some of the lessons learned in San Jose is that, in order to achieve the goal of stabilization in our community, these different policies really interrelate and are dependent on each other. So for example, if there's rent control without just cause, then what can happen is, even though the rents may be limited, someone may receive a no-cause notice and may have to move anyway, which creates a challenge. If there's just cause without rent control, what can happen is, someone can receive a rent increase that is so challenging, let's say, there's no control at all, so they can receive a $500 rent increase, that itself is not an eviction, but it may make it so challenging that the family must move anyway and are displaced. And for the Ellis Act, in order to trigger all of the requirements of the Ellis Act, what we found is that there's a necessity to have it included in the just cause, because those two are linked together as well. So again, what we learned over the last three years of really digging through all of this policy is that it's important to think about how all of these policies work together, and if there are any unintended consequences of taking bits and pieces of it forward. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. I know I will have a few questions for you in a moment, but why don't we ask Ms. Byrd to present? Thank you so much for the thorough presentation. Byrd, welcome to you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Michelle Byrd. I am the Director of Housing and Community Development for the City of Oakland, and I think it is ironic that San Jose and Oakland are so close together, but have such a diverse program when it comes to rent control. Our rent ordinance, and we call it rent stabilization, was passed in 1980, and it covers all units that were built prior to 1983. Our just cause ordinance covers all units built prior to 1995. So if you think about it, we have units that have been built for the last 30 years that are not covered under the rent stabilization program, and that's a large number of units. We estimate that there are approximately 77,600 units that are covered under the rent stabilization program, and approximately 26,400 that are covered by just cause. So within our rent stabilization, it has a rent cap, and it determines how the rent can be increased. We recently, in 2015, 2016, went through a phenomenon where landlords were doing capital improvements and trying to pass those costs off onto the tenants by increasing their rents. So we went through a tremendous amount of time sitting down with our landlords and tenants, trying to come up with a determination as to how much we would allow landlords to raise those rents. And through sitting down and going through that circumstance, we came up with a cap of 5 percent, excuse me, 10 percent on an annual basis, and 30 percent over five years. And those rent increases could be a combination of many things. It could be based upon the consumer price index, banking, increased housing cost services, capital improvements, and fair return. With our rent program, a landlord is able to pass 70 percent of the capital improvement costs onto the tenant, and they are responsible for 30 percent. And so we were seeing a phenomenon where individuals were doing capital improvements that may not have been necessarily needed, but they were passing those costs onto the tenant and thereby raising their rents. And so that was a means in which we felt that we had to do something in regards to that. One of the things that we also, I think that is really different, that we did just recently in November of 2017, we had JJ, which was on the ballot. Now, our just cause ordinance is a voter-approved ordinance, and so in order to change anything in regards to just cause, it has to go before the voters. And one of the things that was tremendously seen, being seen, is that there weren't enough units that were covered under just cause. As I stated before, are those units that were built prior to 1995. Well, before 2017, it was just those units that were built prior to 1983. The voters voted to change that and move it to 1995, which is still a long way from current. Within that, they also changed the process by which petitions can be filed. Currently, pre, excuse me, prior to the June election, tenants were required to submit petitions. The way in which the rent program operates is that we have the ordinance, landlords and tenants are educated on the ordinance, and prior to a landlord renting an apartment, they're required to give a tenant all of the information that is covered in the rent ordinance, and they have to sign those documents and submit them. We were finding that individuals were not receiving those documents, and so tenants were not aware of their rights and did not always have the information required to file a petition. In regards to rent increases, the burden was being placed upon the tenant to have to file a petition in order to fight for their rent being increased. In the ballot measure, it's swapped, and so now landlords are responsible for filing petitions in order to do a rent increase. As indicated in San Jose, we have a rent board. Our rent board consists of two landlord representatives, two tenant representatives, and three neutrals. The way that the process operates is that a landlord or a tenant may file a petition. That petition is reviewed by our program analyst staff and determined if it meets within the standards of the ordinance. If it does, a hearing is scheduled, where a hearing officer will hear both sides of the parties, what the consequences are. Nine times out of 10, they will submit all of their evidence, they will have the opportunity to testify, and then the hearing officer will make the decision. If either party wants to appeal that process, that will go before our rent board, where they will hear the decision, and they will have all the evidence, and they will make a final decision. Once a decision is made by the rent board, it is final unless they want to take it to court. I just want to give you some highlights of the number of petitions. Approximately 10,000 cases have been filed since January of 1996. We have seen an increase in the number of petitions every year. This last fiscal year, we had over 1,000 petitions filed, and that is because of the housing crisis that we are seeing. As you are experiencing here in Sacramento, we are seeing the same in Oakland. We have seen our rent prices increase substantially. We have seen the number of homeless go from 2,000 in 2015 to 2,700 in 2017. We are feeling the gist of the housing crisis. I think, and it was indicated by your Assistant City Manager, we have seen an increase in the economic boom, where jobs are growing, but we have not been able to keep up with the building. I think it's been forecasted that in the region, there were a half a million jobs that were added, and only 50,000 units of housing. Within our rent stabilization program, we also have our tenant protection ordinance. It is provided for individuals who feel as though they are being harassed, that they are being threatened, and they have the ability to file a complaint against their landlord, and it is brought before our hearing officers. Under the just cause... Under the just cause, as was also stated, San Jose, we have 11 notices that can be filed. We haven't seen a large number of those, but because of the growing demand for the owner occupancy, we're seeing that that is changing. Within the rent stabilization program of the City of Oakland, we have an exemption of duplexes and triplexes as long as the owner is occupying that. We have seen a phenomenon of individuals who are indicating that they want to come back and move into the property, or they're bringing a family member to move into the property, and we are seeing that that is becoming an issue. The, the council members have put on the ballot in November to take that exemption away because they are seeing that that is going to, that is a growing phenomenon, and so that will be decided upon in November of this year whether or not to remove the exemption clause for the duplexes and triplexes. I just want to say that I think one of the lessons that we've learned within this program is that it is evolving. We are constantly reevaluating the program, constantly reevaluating the ordinance to see if it is dealing with the issue at hand. When we developed the, the ordinance in 1980, we were in a different time. Now we're seeing different phenomenons, and so we're having to evaluate the program and evaluate the ordinance to see if it is doing the effect in which we would like it to. We are seeing an overwhelming abundance of individuals who are being displaced, and the objective that we really want to see is to keep individuals in their homes. We know that we cannot build enough housing at a fast enough rate to prevent individuals from being displaced, and so we have really looked at our program and looked at the services that we can provide to see if there's an infant, there's an emphasis that we can put on preventing displacement. And so that is one of the reasons why we have looked at providing $2.2 million in anti-displacement services to help with individuals who prevent them from being displaced, because we recognize that if we could keep an individual in their home, they're less likely to become homeless because once they lose that housing, because their rents are so high, it is difficult for them to survive and stay in, in the City of Oakland, and so we are providing an emphasis on that. We've also looked at making sure that we educate individuals. It's important that we educate not only the landlords, but the tenants. We look at the rent stabilization program as a conduit. We believe that if the landlords understand the ordinance and the tenants understand the ordinance, the basic mechanism by which the rent stabilization program is to come in and make a determination if it was followed to the letter of the law. And if not, to make a determination as to whom is in error and make that decision. We believe that if individuals have enough outreach, are highly educated on the ordinance, then there should not be any problems, but when they are, that's where the rent stabilization program comes into play. I think, if the question is asked, why is it important to have this program? I think, as has been stated before, it allows individuals to maintain the stability in their hu, in their housing. It also maintains the ability for us to keep our housing stock and keep it at affordable rents. One of the questions was asked, does it prevent development? I don't know if any of you have been in Oakland lately, and you've seen the cranes. We've got about 6,000 units that are under development in the City of Oakland. There's not as many of them as we would like to see affordable, but we believe that we are moving forward with that, with the passage of our impact fees, and so for every unit that is being built of market rate, we're seeing $22,000 go towards our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So as you move forward and making decisions as to how you're going to implement a rent stabilization program, I think I would leave with you that you make sure that however you present it, that it is done with enough outreach to properly educate both sides, the landlords and the tenants.
Thank you again very, very much. Both of you, really, I know, again, I repeat it, I know it's a sacrifice, come to the capital city and share your experience with us. I'd like to open this to questions from members. I know I have some questions, but I will ask Councilmember Chenier, who's up on the, on the scoreboard here, to go first, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks very much for being here. Just a couple of questions. So for, for nineteen, the 1979 date for San Jose, that's a firm date, it's not rolling going forward. So it's just a point in time.
Right, so, is this on? Can you hear?
Is it on?
Okay.
It is on.
Okay. So the way the law works in, or in San Jose, what our experience was, on September 7, 1979, the City Council of San Jose passed an ordinance restricting rents to eight percent per year. And there was a whole ordinance that came with that. It established the mediation program, the petition processes, all of that. So what happened subsequently was that on the state level, Costa-Hawkins passed. And so what happened when Costa-Hawkins passed is that essentially our apartment rent ordinance was kind of frozen in time. So if, if, let's say that our city council would have in 1985 or something like that, updated the ordinance and brought it forward, then we would have more units covered. However, that never happened, and so when Costa-Hawkins passed, then our ordinance just got frozen in time. So we have no legal authority to expand rent control beyond how it was originally passed in San Jose. However, the just cause is, is seen differently on a legal, has a different legal basis and is not the controlling of rent. So that's why, so basically the just cause ordinance is a separate ordinance and is, it is, the coverage includes all new construction and apartments built in any time.
Okay. And what's your vacancy rates?
What is our vacancy rate?
Yeah?
Ours is probably less than four percent.
I think ours is, I would say it's between three and four percent, maybe about 3.75 right now.
And do you know, I think it's for both of you, in communities or cities surrounding your cities, do they also have some type of rent stabilization, or can you make any comparisons? I mean, you're in some pretty highly-desired areas, obviously.
The City of Berkeley does have a rent, they have a more stringent rent control, and they have about 17,000 units that are under it, and I think that their program is a little bit different because you're dealing with students in the university and so, but they do have a very strong, I think their vacancy rate is, it fluctuates because it is a college town. San Francisco has a totally different program constructed because of, just because it's San Francisco.
So within, within the Bay Area in general, I would just say between Oakland, Berkeley, San Jose, San Francisco, East Palo Alto are kind of the longstanding programs. And then within the last two years, there were several ballot measures that popped up in different, different places. So Mountain View now has a rent control ordinance, and Richmond, Alameda, and then there were also ballot measures in other jurisdictions that didn't pass, but there's been a lot of conversation in, I would say, the general Bay Area on this topic.
So where I was going with it is if you've been able to make any comparisons between, so you went from 48 developments to 153 developments, which we'd be happy to take the delta hundred on the, in Sacramento, but have you been able to make any comparisons of those who don't have rent control in the area? I know you're cer, you seem to be surrounded on one side, but not going east for, for Oakland. See what pe, what's happening on the development side, with and without?
I, I think, I think it would be hard because of the phenomenon that's going on that, you know, the housing market is so hot. I, I couldn't definitively say that it is because it does or does not have a rent stabilization or rent control program.
Yeah, I would agree. We're seeing development pressure for new housing in the region, and I, I can't say that, you know, Santa Clara, right next to San Jose, is, is getting any more development than San Jose. I, I just don't, I just don't see that. It's, it's, it's really based on land availability and what developers can get their hands on and, and understanding. We, we've been working with developers on these different issues, and, and I, I would say that they have a fairly good understanding of how everything works, and they're pretty familiar with it. So, so they just move forward. Yeah.
Two more quick questions. On the relocation assistance, what does that look like? Is that a set number of months? Does it depend on some things?
Right, so what we do is we have it, we have it determined by bedroom size, so studio ones, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. Each, each different size has a different amount of relocation assistance. The relocation assistance was calculated originally by taking a look at what a market rent is in San Jose, because the concept is if I have to move out of my apartment, I'm going to need to go pay a market rent because I'm not going to fi, even if I'm paying something under, under-market right now, I'm not necessarily going to find a new apartment for less, for what I'm paying now. It's going to be whatever the market is. So what we did was took one month's market rent for a deposit, we took it at deposit about, and then two months' market rent, and then an assumed amount for moving expenses, and that is the relocation benefit about.
Three months plus moving?
Yeah, approximately. Mm-hmm.
Do you all do that?
We, we do have relocation if, if the property is Ellis-ed out, or if a owner decides to move in, an owner move in, and so it's based upon pretty much the same calculation we look at. Well, I take that back. We went to a set rate, and so for a one-bedroom, individual will get $6,500; a two-bedroom, they'll get $9,000. And for a re-
This is all relative to what they pay in rent, too?
Right, right. I mean, so, I mean theoretically, that is just a one-time payment that they'll get.
Right.
We've also added a $2,500 bonus if the tenant is senior, disabled, low-income, or have children.
And then finally, cost to administer the program, do you, do you know what it costs your cities to do this? And I'm not talking about the other, the 2.2 million in assistance you're looking at, but the actual administrative cost.
So our program is cost-covering, and so it's based upon a fee. Currently, our fee is $68 per unit, and we are able to, currently, right now, our staffing consists of, we have-
$68 per unit?
$68 per unit, that is under, so, so 77,000 units times $68, that's our-
So everything under rent control, annual cost?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have approximately thirteen, 17.5 staff, and then we also have three city attorneys, so we have a staff of 20.
But you guys?
Ours is actually very similar. So we have a, our, it's again a fee-based program, so we charge each, each apartment covered by rent control $75 per year. And then what that pays for is that we're, we're actually in the middle of implementing a three-phase staffing increase because we're trying to, our direction from city council was to, to take the fees up and to provide the staff it takes to really implement the program well. So a couple of years ago, we actually had about two and a half people who were working on it, which, which is not as effective. And now we're going towards a plan of 20 staff members, and that makes up, that is a, a combination of attorneys and hearing officers, staff members, outreach workers, kind of a whole combination of staffing.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Chenier. Councilmember Carr.
Appreciate your comments, and appreciate the time and distance you have traveled to be with us. We really appreciate it. As Michael said, in the long run, we know supply is going to equal demand, in the long run. The question for us is how do you get to the long run? How do, what do we do without tipping the scale so much that we don't allow the long run to ever get here? In one instance, the rent control ordinance has been in place since 1980, and we haven't reached the long run. Is it because we put our hand on the scale, or once we go down the rent control avenue, it's in perpetuity, we can never get off of it?
I would say in Oakland, it is, the, the rent stabilization program has not impacted development. I think for, for a while in Oakland, developers weren't developing because they say it wasn't penciling out. They were saying that they could not cover their cost of development in the City of Oakland, and that a lot, a lot of times, they were going to San Francisco. Well, lo and behold, now it pencils out and see, we're seeing a tremendous amount of development in Oakland. I don't think the rent stabilization program has had any impact on the development. I think if anything, for, for some feel that there has not been a strong enough rent stabilization program to protect individuals that have been displaced because of the ability to increase the rents on those units that are not protected. We have had individuals whose rent have doubled, gone from, you know, 1,400 to 2,800 a month, and they have not been, because it's not covered under the rent stabilization program, they have no recourse, so they have no option but to move out. So I would say that we are, we are seeing the benefit of the economy, and developers are seeing that it is now penciling out in Oakland, and I do not feel like the rent stabilization program will have any impact on that. If anything, it will be the economy that will have an impact on whether development. I think right now, construction costs are escalating. We're seeing a lack of being able to get contractors because everyone is building, and so that is seeing how prices are escalating. I, I think that's one of the reasons why we recognize that we cannot build our, build our way out of this problem, that there are going to be a number of different projects and programs that's going to help us deal with the housing crisis. In Oakland, we are looking at a number of different issues. We're looking at accessory dwelling units, we're looking at modular housing, we're looking at, we're looking at the ability to have individuals work with our housing authority, where the housing authority is giving incentives to individuals to continue to take, take Section 8, because we were seeing landlords stopping taking Section 8 because they felt like they could get a bigger bang for their buck without dealing with Section 8 from the market. And so we have recognized in Oakland that in order to deal with this housing crisis, there are going to be a number of tools in our tool belt to deal with it. But I don't believe that the rent stabilization program will inhibit the developers to continue developing Oakland.
But you see it going on in perpetuity?
The rent stabilization program?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, I, I think what we will, I think what will be a determining factor is in the, in the ballot measure in November with Costa-Hawkins. That will be a determining factor for all jurisdictions, because if Costa-Hawkins goes away, then it allows local jurisdictions to make determinations as to how they want to run their programs.
So the Stanford study, which I'm sure you're familiar with, hypothesized, postulated, and with some proof, with some charts that I couldn't quite understand, said that, and they looked at San Francisco and their particular circumstance, and that as many houses were leaving the market as new units were getting constructed. But it doesn't sound like that experiences in San Jose or Oakland.
I can, I can speak to that. So I am familiar with the study that you're talking about. San Francisco has an interesting phenomenon going on right now, which we are very interested. I mean, it's 40 miles away, so I mean, it's, you know, it's our neighborhood, right? So we want to understand what's happening. But there are, essentially what's happening under what I refer to as the Ellis Act, what's happening is they're using the Ellis Act, owners are using it to remove units from the market and then create tenants in common, which is kind of a different type of ownership. But it's, it is a way to avoid the rent control, basically. So it is interesting. I would say that it's, it's unique to San Francisco right now. I think they're really under a lot of pressure. Their rental market is just, it's ki- it's just this enormous pressure right now. And I think, um, we need to learn from it, but, um, but is not something that we have seen happen in San Jose at all, not one. Um, so anyway, so again, it's important for us to be very aware and study and understand. Um, but I do not find it very common. In San Jose, the number-one reason for anyone to Ellis an apartment building is because they are tearing it down to build more housing. And what we've found is the densities, the number of units they're removing are either tripling or they're, the, the number that they're proposing in its place are three, four, up to five times the number of units that they're taking down. So, um, so in, in, in our situation, again, where we're facing a housing crisis, we don't have enough housing at all income levels, um, we understand that there, in some cases, you know, there may be some displacement, but that, that displacement may be, um, a necessary step in order to actually create more housing in the end. So that's what we see happening in San Jose.
Then more new housing won't be subject to rent control?
The new housing will, yeah, it actually, the Ellis Act, um, requires that, what our ordinance requires is that half of all the new units created are subject to rent control. So, so that is not, basically even with saying the new development will be subject to rent control, which is different than anywhere else in the city, um, developers are still very interested in moving forward with their projects.
Okay. Uh, on the just cause evictions, is that an onerous process? Do you have to get a lawyer to get rid of someone who's causing trouble in your, uh, what's the standard of proof? Is it beyond a reasonable doubt or suspicion or what?
No, um, you know what, what I, I did along with my team is we actually went down to the court and went to eviction court and just sat there for a little while and tried to, you know, understand what happens. Um, I would just say that in, um, well, first of all, the most common, uh, reason for the cau- just cause is non-payment of rent. By many, many times.
That's pretty easy to prove. What about the other things?
The other things, yes, okay. So the other, the other items, essentially what ha- what I've seen done, um, well is really just, um, good property management. That's what I would call it. So if there is, um, noise is an extremely common problem. So basically what the eviction notice is, is, you know, on October fifth, I warned you about the noise at two o'clock in the morning. On November fifth, it happened again. On December first, here's your notice to terminate. And so what happens is those, there's, there's documentation for those different instances and that's all, that's what it takes. So it is important, I would not say that that requires an attorney. Um, that's my opinion. Um, but what it does require is, is, um, good property management and documentation.
Yeah, I would agree. I think most, most landlords lose their cases because they don't come prepared and they don't have the, the documentation to back up what their, their accusations. And so the, the, the judge has no recourse but to throw it out because there's nothing that substantiate what they are-
Sure.
-trying to prove. And so I agree. So yes, the easiest one is non-payment of rent. If they're not paying the rent, you can, the rent rolls will prove that. But when you get into the touchy area where, you know, you played your music too loud, okay, how do you determine how loud it was? Who, who makes that determination? Did you have any complaints? And if the landlord has not substantiated it, does not have the proper documentation to show that they had given them warnings and gone through the process, then the judge is more likely to throw it out and they have to start all over.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for asking me.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Carr. I don't see any other members punched up, so I guess it's my turn, ladies. The mayor will be back in a second. First of all, um, I don't remember if you addressed this, but do you exempt units under a certain count? I know you talked about duplexes and triplexes a little bit in Oakland, but San Jose?
Okay. So in San Jose, the apartment rent ordinance applies to any apartment building with three units or more. Um, and then our just cause is the same, it applies to three units or, or more. Um, however, our city council has asked us to go back and look at extending just cause to duplexes as well. So, uh, but we haven't done that yet.
Does it also apply if a apartment owner owns more than three units or just for that particular site?
It's actually dependent on the structure itself, the building itself.
So like a triplex or more is the issue?
Correct.
Because the Bay Area's been experiencing housing challenges for probably since nineteen-seventy-nine and nineteen-eighty, how do you see rent control in your jurisdictions as helping to alleviate the housing shortage? Um, because one of the things that's come up repeatedly here is that, and you, you have very large corporations, a ton of money pouring in, very different situation than us where you and, I, I saw a statistic, it's on my computer over here, that within a five-year period, San Jose added about two-hundred-thousand jobs, uh, in the region and only about twenty-nine-thousand units of housing. How, how does this play into that conversation? Because we're often told that, uh, in a jurisdiction like ours, maybe not in yours, but there's not sufficient opportunity to pro forma housing units. And you mentioned that you have a number of projects in the pipeline, but how are they being financed, uh, uh, to get them built, given some of the constraints on rent that you have?
So again, I want to reiterate, the rent control is not, does not, um, by law, essentially, at this moment in time, it cannot extend to new construction. So.
Will that change if, uh, in your jurisdiction, if Costa-Hawkins is repealed?
That's, it's really hard to say because our jurisdiction has not considered that. So anyway, so I just want to make it clear again that the, you know, any developers coming into San Jose to do a new project, they are not, they are not, um, they're not constrained by the rent, the five percent. However, we have been, we have talked to both lenders and to developers over this past year in, in depth about this question. And the reality is lenders, um, underwrite financing at, um, pretty much CPI. That's how they underwrite. So they'll look at, um, rent increases, they'll take a look at what market rents are right now and then they will, they will inflate them between two and three percent, um, over time. That's how they, they underwrite. And what happens is, in our case, our rent limit is five percent. So in no pro forma would they ever actually show five percent over five percent over five percent. It's just not even realistic. There just is not a market, even in San Jose, that has actually been able to, um, continually have a five percent rent increase year over year. It's just not even, it's not something a lender would, would ever write into a deal. So what we have found is that there is, there is, um, another tier of debt that, um, is really kind of that second tier where, um, it's a little riskier. And, and that range may be looking at, 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 at those, they want to see gains at those levels. But even then, um, we've talked to lenders doing that type of lending and they would still, honestly, no lender would write in anything five percent year over year. It's just not sustainable. So, um, so they don't use those types of assumptions.
Do you think that more housing would have been built in your jurisdictions if you hadn't adopted the rent control provisions in nineteen-seventy-nine and nineteen-eighty?
I don't think it's had any impact.
I don't, no. I don't. And I, I, I would, I mean, I would, as I stated before, I think the reason why we weren't seeing, um, a dramatic increase in Oakland is because developers were indicating that it was not penciling out. And now they are seeing that it's penciling out. And we, we have over, um, this year alone, we approved permits for over eight-thousand units and so-
Building permits?
Building permits. And so we see that. I think in, in regards to, you know, our rent stabilization does not cover any new construction either. Our rent stabilization only cover units from nineteen-eighty-three and below. So again, we have not had any units in the last thirty years be impacted by the rent stabilization program. And so I, that is why I can safely say that it has not impacted any, any development in, in Oakland.
So two following questions from that. One is, uh, the same question about San Jose. Do you see the repeal of Costa-Hawkins impacting that construction?
We have not, um, locally, we have not determined how we would, if it is passed, what the impact will be. And so I think that will be a discussion amongst the city council, how they will-
Has the development community indicated that it's potentially problematic and stopped projects or is waiting to see?
No, we still have them coming in requesting building permits.
And then, um-
Because I think one of the things that we have to also, that, um, regardless, it has to allow a landlord a fair rate of return. And so you cannot, um, deny a landlord from having the fair rate of return on their investment in their property.
I, I guess the, uh, two, two last questions. One has to do with where we are in this economic cycle. Given that we've been in a very long, um, upswing, uh, a lot of people are saying this is potentially peak or close to peak for this, this cycle. We saw a huge, um, decline in the number of housing units being built in the state during the last recession, particularly in jurisdictions like ours, which were heavily impacted by the housing bust. If we are at peak and we begin to see production decline, um, how does that impact the shortage in your jurisdictions? Um, do you, do you think that, uh, you'll continue to see, um, uh, new housing built because the Bay Area's economy is so strong? Or do you think that, um, uh, those housing units that you're counting on to take pressure off will, uh, will still be developed?
I, I believe because there is such a huge demand, I mean, it's supply and demand. And if those units are not built, um, we're going to see an even more, um, difficulty issue. We're going to see more individuals, um, that are homeless. And so I don't, I mean, everyone says that we're, you know, we're at the peak and we're still, but I think, um, those units will be built and it's based upon projections, as she indicated, that they've looked at how to forecast and the amount. So I, I don't foresee those units not being developed.
Um, I've been reading about the vacancy rate and it seems like a healthy vacancy rate, according to some of the experts, is around five percent. So I guess I have one other question after this. Do you have a plan to get to five percent vacancy, uh, for each of your jurisdictions to help take pressure off of the increases that, from shortages?
So in two thousand and sixteen, Mayor Schaaf put together a seventeen and seventeen and basically it's producing seventeen-thousand units and preserving seventeen-thousand units by the year of twenty-twenty-four. And so we have a detailed plan on how we're going to get there.
Is that seventeen thousand a year or seventeen total?
Seventeen total. And so it is a culmination of market rate and affordable, as well as looking at a variety of ways in which we can preserve units. One of the things that we've done in Oakland, um, with some of our nonprofit is purchasing existing apartment complexes to maintain the affordability. And so the, uh, nonprofit will purchase an apartment building and, um, we will subsidize it so that they maintain their rents between sixty and eighty percent. And so that allows those individuals who are already residing there to stay there. And so, um, we are, again, not looking at just construction of housing, but we're looking at preserving housing as well.
And I just wanted to add, so in San Jose, just in the, um, last couple of months, our mayor has put forward a plan to, over the next five years, to build twenty-five-thousand new housing units in San Jose, ten thousand of which are to be affordable, to be restricted affordable. So I just wanted to know on your point about where we are in the cycle, um, you know, one, one thing we just see too is like, let's say that we are going to tip down, then we feel like this is the time when we need to really jump in and just build affordable housing. Um, you know, there's a lot, the, like, like she mentioned, the cost of construction and the cost of land right now is very challenging. So even to do, make affordable housing work, it's, it's just getting more and more expensive. So, you know, if we had just a little cool, a little, a little breeze in the market, um, we really see that as a time of opportunity where we could, um, hopefully, um, find that last little piece of land, um, for maybe a little better price and, um, and, um, just get in there and get the affordable housing built now.
And then the last question, the National Bureau of Economic Research in Cambridge put out a report in January, um, that looked at the imposition of rent control in San Francisco. And one of the conclusions from the researchers, um, who are from, uh, Stanford, um, it looks like, and maybe this is the study that Mr. Carr was referring to, it looks like that when rent control is imposed, the non-covered units, uh, end up with at least a five-point-one percent, uh, citywide increase because of the, um, distortion in the market caused by the, the rents in some units being contained, the lack of movement of those tenants to other units. And so the non-covered units become more scarce and causes a rent increase. Have you, well, I guess you'd have to go back to nineteen-seventy-nine and nineteen-eighty to really understand that impact. But the, the, it's a very nerdy report with lots of, um, statistics and things and formulas.
I think, I think there's just a lot more to the market. I, um, I've just been, I've been spending some time with duplex owners just in the last couple of weeks because we're really looking at duplexes. Duplexes are a portion of our market that are not controlled. And they're, they're not even in the conversation of being controlled. And so I was talking with, um, some of the owners and they're charging, they're saying, well, I, I mean, again, in, in the San Jose's market, uh, uh, for a one or two-bedroom, um, we're looking at twenty-three-hundred, twenty-four-hundred dollars. So anyway, what these duplex owners are saying, well, I charge nine-fifty and I have for the last, you know, seven years that this tenant's been here, um, because, because I, I, I care about them and that's what I do. And so I think a lot of, um, the reality is that what, what we have found is that there are different types of property management and there are what we just call the mom and pops. So what happens with the mom and pops is they actually develop relationships with these people. They're important in their life and it's not necessarily the most important thing to them to raise the rent on every single second that they can. It's more about stability for that person and that family and for themselves. And so generally what we see is that the, the rents in those may be lower than in some of the other markets. If you work with a big, um, a big property manager, they have amazing software that literally can recalculate what they can market their rents for on a daily basis. And so they will be, they will be pushing up rents every minute that they can and every single time they market a new, um, a new vacant unit, it's going to be marketed at the exact right price point to capture every ounce of the market. So what, there's different ways to do it. Um, and so I think what's important to understand too in your community is who owns the rental property, right? What, 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 what is their, what are their goals? And in San Jose, we have a, um, actually the majority is mom and pops. That's the majority of our rental housing and, and those that are covered by rent control. And so, so we, we understand that those rents may not look like the market, but it's for a lot of different reasons. And so, um, I think it's just important to understand just the community and the ownership.
And I, I'll agree with that. That's one of the reasons why when the rent ordinance in Oakland was evolved and it did not include the duplexes and triplexes, because it was considered the mom and pops. It was those, um, individuals who purchased those properties as looking to see that that was going to be their retirement, that they were going to use that property as their retirement. And as Rachel has said, a lot of them have developed a family that they have been there for fifteen, they've seen that their, their, their families have raised their children and their children have been there. And so, um, I think it was a conscious effort in Oakland to exempt those buildings because they didn't want to put that onus on an individual to feel like that there were pressure. They wanted to, um, maintain that feeling of family, that feeling of, okay, let's, we can sit down and we can discuss how we're going to raise the rent if we need to raise the rent or if there is a special circumstance where we need to work with you. We're not beholden by the rent ordinance. We can sit down and have a conversation. We don't have to go up to City Hall and have that conversation. We can deal with it one-on-one.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. The discussion is just great. I want to see if we can move it along just a little bit here, okay? So we can get through the evening.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be brief. Um, does the ordinances in either one of your cities address the length of the lease at all? And if not, why?
No, it doesn't. I think that, I mean, we, we don't want to get- I think that, I mean, we, we don't want to get into the business of telling landlords the longevity of their leases. It just gives parameters by which how much they can raise the rent and those things of that nature.
Yeah, San Jose does not have any requirements on the length of lease. However, we did consider that. I just want to add that over the last year, we thought about, when we were, it was really in our just cause discussion, when we were thinking about that, where we wanted to have at least a one-year lease offered. And then a tenant could deny it, but that was something we thought about. However, when we went to the full just cause, we decided to let go of that provision. And the reason was because under just cause, a landlord can offer a one-year lease, but then at the end of the lease, they, they don't, they can't actually just terminate it. They need to have a reason to terminate it. So, so essentially, we let go of the term and, 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 you know, the landlord can determine that. But knowing that whenever that relationship is going to end, there needs to be a reason.
Second question, Oakland has a rent board?
Yes.
San Jose does not?
Correct.
One got started in 1979, the other in 1980. Did you compare yourselves to each other and you made different decisions? I'd like to know why.
Um, I don't know. I was still in high school.
She's still in, she says she was still in high school.
We need a different witness for that question.
I, I think, particularly in Oakland, Oakland is a really community-driven, involved. And so there was a feeling that there needed to be an independent party to review the appeals process.
Again, and I, I can't really speak to why it was set up that way to begin with. But in San Jose, I think the city council really, they like the autonomy of being able to make the decisions related to rent control. Because otherwise, I think they would see, they see the policy level as really important. They see themselves as policymakers. And I don't know that they were willing to delegate those decisions to rent board, honestly. I think that's kind of what it is in San Jose. So, and however, now, over the last several of years, now they get the joy of dealing with, you know, packed houses and lots and lots of really long meetings to discuss this. But now it's, it is their call, it's their decision. So, I mean, they could have also decided to separate that from themselves, but they have maintained that responsibility, so.
Just let me, let me be clear. The rent board does not make the final policy decision. The council makes the final policy decision. So the rent board will make recommendations and go through a process. But the final policy decision is that of the council. The rent board, they review all of the policy, make recommendations, and they hear all of the appeal cases that come before the rent board.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Jennings, or Councilmember Geta, I'm sorry.
Just my neighbor too, Mike.
Yes, yes.
A couple of quick questions and then just clarifying one. One, both of you mentioned your, that some of the program was fee-based. Is the mediation component of your program also encompassing that 68 and 70 something dollar fee for both of those?
Yes, so essentially if someone participates in the program, they don't pay to participate, it's free to them. However, that cost of that service is included in the annual fee.
Okay, that, that the landlord pays into this, to the city. And that's the same thing with Oakland?
With Oakland, it is, the regulation is, is written that the landlord could pass 50% of the cost onto the tenant.
Okay, and then are, you mentioned the financial models that some of these tools were being used for rent increases. Did you speak within it when you were discussing, you said you had a lot of conversation with lenders? Do you know if the lenders' formulas were based upon the usage of those financial models for their developments to work?
Trying to, do you mind just re-staying the question?
Sure, you, you mentioned that some of these, some of the management company use financial models to determine the rent. But the, and then you had also previously mentioned that you talked, talked to lenders about how they were adjusting their lending. Were the lending practices dependent upon those tools?
Okay, I would say there's really two separate sets of tools. So property management companies have tools to determine, to assess, constantly assess what the market value is of any rent in any neighborhood at any given time. Do you know what I mean? So, you know, I don't want to pick on anybody, like, but let's just say, like, in San Jose, Avalon has like this whole software system and they calculate everything and they know what they can charge in a certain neighborhood for rent tomorrow. And they can, they can do it. They have, they have so many units that they can take data and continually aggregate it. So, I mean, their rents could be increasing, like a new, like a rent for a new unit could be increasing every day that week. You know, it just depends if they can get that amount in another place. So they just have so much, if it's a larger corporation, they have.
They have enough volume for them to actually say whether they can.
Exactly, to like determine what the market is. So for, when we're talking about a lender, they may be using that type of information, but it's really just for, but it, it has to be more predictive because that is really like a current market analysis, which changes literally every day. So a lender is looking at, okay, if you're going to start construction next year, in three years, we're going to market the first ones. And then from there on, we need this thing to, to be producing rent over the next 30 years. So they create models that are much more long-term. And then when they go out long-term, basically, what I'm saying is the year-over-year increases are generally no more than CPI.
But they're not using, to your knowledge, the, the.
It would be a different type of, they may, they may start, they may figure out where the starting point is there. But then for the long-term, they use different.
Clarifying question, I think you had mentioned that, you know, that if you could explain this, the issue of the phenomenon, you said it's hot, that it's, it's just different about the, the, the construction market in both your areas. And I think, I think Rachel, you had mentioned that it's just a different phenomenon of what you see happening in the construction area.
I, I think in Oakland, we, we are, there have been vacant lots that have been sitting vacant for years. There were even projects that were started and then they stopped. And they, nothing happened for two or three years. I think because, and I hate to say this, what is happening in San Francisco, we get the effects of it. So the market is, is gone up so high, it costs so much to build in Oakland. I mean, in San Francisco, the rents are so high in San Francisco. So we're seeing that, you know, developers are saying, okay, we can go over to Oakland and the costs are not as high. Even the renters are saying, you know, instead of paying $5,000 for a one or two-bedroom, I can go to Oakland and pay 3,500 to 4,000 for a one or two-bedroom. So we're seeing that phenomenon of that, the, the, the rents are penciling out where developers are saying, okay, we had initially wanted to start this project in 2008, 2009. We had to stop. For example, we, we had a 3,100-unit project called Brooklyn Basin that we started reviewing this project in 2006. We just started construction on it last year. So it's been a 10 to 11-year hiatus from the time that it was approved at City Council to the, to the time where construction started. So we, we went through that, you know, housing has the, the ebbs and flows. And I think as developers, they see, okay, when is the opportune time that I can build? Boom, let me do it now. So that's what we're seeing.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I just want to explore one area briefly, please. And again, thank you, really thorough, and the questions from the members are all very, very good. I want to explore the mediation question for a moment and how it works. So as I understand it, you have a mandatory rent cap for older units. And then the mediation is available if a owner wants to impose a rent that exceeds the cap. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, we also, there are other bases for filing a petition for, to enter the mediation. So the.
Briefly, please, because we, go ahead. What are the, what?
Okay. So it could be a health and safety concern, service reduction.
Mediation is broader, okay.
Yes.
Than just, okay. And is the mediation have any binding element to it? In other words, if the owner says 10% and the cap is.
Five.
Five. Does the mediator have any binding authority? Or is it just a good faith attempt to try to address the dispute?
So in Oakland, you have, when a petition is filed, you have the ability to go directly to mediation and it is binding, it cannot be appealed. And so both parties will sign off on an agreement. It will be binding.
No, but what if they can't agree?
So then if they can't agree, in our instance, they may go to a hearing where there is an opportunity for both sides to provide evidence and go through a whole process and a hearing officer will make a decision. In those cases, if a decision is made from a hearing, it, it can be, an appeal can be filed by either party and it, that decision can be overturned or it could be.
Okay. So ultimately, there's a binding part of the process, even if it isn't the mediation?
Yes.
How about in San Jose?
So in San Jose, our first step is our mediation. So what happens is our hearing officers come in and they attempt to mediate the situation and come up with a voluntary agreement. If they're unable to do that, then they kind of switch modes right then and there and review evidence and if, and then in the end, if there's no agreement, they can actually write a decision out of the first hearing. And then either party can appeal that to a second administrative hearing. And then a separate hearing officer hears that case. And that is more, it's more formal. I would say the second level is, is a little more formal where they present evidence. And then, again, a binding decision is written by the hearing officer at the end.
Okay, so same idea, namely that the mediation is not binding, but there is a part of the process that if the parties cannot agree, has some form of authority to say, okay, this is reasonable, this is not reasonable. Okay, thank you both very, very much for, for coming up here. Again, very, very informative. Anytime you need us to come to either of your cities to testify on the great things or the controversial things we're doing.
We always got controversy.
Especially, especially if you invite me on a Tuesday night, I am happy to come. And I'm sure a couple of my colleagues would be glad to go with me. So we, we really appreciate, please give them a hand for, for taking their time. Thank you. Okay, very good. And Michael, Ms. Jessa, thank you as well. Ms. Pace and Ms. Griss, thank you, thank you. Okay, we now move to the next piece of this. And I'm going to do something that I wouldn't usually do, which is essentially present myself. Because I, I want my colleagues and the public to at least have the benefit, not only of my thinking as the city's mayor in public session, but also to just summarize some of the history over the last several months. And of course, if anybody from the audience wants to come up and disagree with my characterization, that's absolutely, absolutely your right. But I think in 15 minutes, I can kind of frame the conversation and speak about the difficult choices that, but important choices that we face as a city. So first of all, let me just acknowledge, we're public servants. Yes, we are politicians. And I view the word politician as an honorable term, actually. It's our job to take the toughest of tough issues and to try to bring, bring some positive resolution. But I want to acknowledge right from the get-go, sort of the obvious, that the politics of this issue, the politics of this issue are not very good. In fact, this issue for public officials is, is difficult at best. You've got pretty strong lines drawn in the sand. You got an initiative potentially headed for the 2020 ballot. And you have a lot of people, good people have shown up here tonight, good with nice light blue t-shirts, who have organized, who have a very, very different, different point of view. And so I suppose it would be the easiest thing in the world for this elected body to say, you know, we have a lot of other things going on. I measure you, we have a lot of things going on in our community. We ought to just sort of put this off for a while. But unfortunately, this issue is about more than just politics. It is about, on all sides, our economic aspirations as a city. But it's also about thousands of unnamed people who aren't here in this chamber tonight, who are hurting. And so we have to recognize, politics are every day, it's what we do and it's real. But at the same time, do what we're beginning to do here tonight. And that is have an honest discussion, to be willing to disagree with one another, to question one another and to have the kind of conversation we can't have, I say this a lot now, that I used to have when I was pro tem of the Senate, where you could caucus with your members and meet behind closed doors and hash out a lot of agreements and then go out into the floor and you vote. We don't do that here. We have the Brown Act, which we respect. This is our opportunity to have that public conversation. So I want to begin by making it clear, and I know this doesn't please some folks in the audience, that I actually do not favor permanent rent control in our city. I believe that building more affordable units is the only successful, as Councilmember Carr said, long-term strategy to stabilize rents and to provide quality housing for sacramentans at all income levels. I also believe that permanent or onerous regulation could stifle the incentive to build more housing. And as I mentioned a moment ago, everyone knows that there is a potential of a 2020 ballot initiative which would create such a plan for right or wrong. And I've always believed that it is wise for all sides, all sides, to dig deep and to avoid, if possible, all or nothing outcomes. And so let us begin with what we all agree with. We all agree, and in fact, we're going to have a council workshop over the next several weeks. I don't know that we set an exact date. But within a couple of weeks, where we are going to discuss, and I am prepared to support every and all reasonable proposal, aggressive proposal to streamline the permitting process and to provide relief for developers, especially nonprofit developers who want to build more affordable housing. And I acknowledge my colleagues in the council tonight, who you'll hear from, who put out, you know, some of their own ideas about streamlining tonight. I know this, I'm going to ask for, within 30 to 60 days, that the staff come back. Yes, that the staff come back with specific ordinance changes that will require a 25% reduction in plan review time. I want, as one of the speakers said, or maybe it was one of my colleagues, I want us to set a tangible production goal that we can all get behind that is aggressive and attainable. I want us to implement Senator Weiner's SB 35 and adopt a local component by creating by right ministerial checklist for design review for certain mixed income and affordable housing projects with no discretionary review or SEQA. Controversial bill at the state level, it passed, signed by the governor. We ought to take advantage of it. I want, within 30 to 60 days, an ordinance before us that will guarantee turnaround timeframes for by right projects and building permits. I want us, within the next 30 to 60 days, to consider waiving city impact fees for regulated affordable housing, for low-income housing, and to develop proposals to do the same for moderate income housing. I would like us to consider, within 30 to 60 days, all subject to the vote of the council, of course, proposals to reduce or eliminate parking requirements for housing projects near transit stops. Those are big costs to developers and we ought to be able to bring them down. I would like us, whether it's within 30 to 60 days or soon thereafter, this is now the medium term, for us to bring back proposals that were, will allow us to more efficiently utilize our existing housing stock to increase availability of housing units. our existing housing stock to increase availability of housing units by exploring rental assistance for intergenerational student housing, where seniors and students are living together and we provide the right kind of subsidy to be able to help create more housing opportunity. I would like the city manager, at the direction of the council, again, 30 to 60 days, to consider the establishment of a chief housing officer. I use the term czar, but my people, my people had bad experience with the czars back in the day. So maybe it's, maybe it's better that we use the term chief housing officer. But somebody who is in charge, at sort of the level of Mr. Jasso's similar, who can help those who want to build more of what we know we need more of, get through the gauntlet as quickly as possible. So we all agree, well, I don't know that we all agree. These are items that I would certainly stand behind, where I think there is the potential for greater consensus. And yet, we must acknowledge tonight, maybe if nothing else comes out of this hearing, I hope the following comes out of this hearing, that simply easing the path to new supply will not produce results for at least a few years. And that we confront with equal passion the question of how do we help the tens of thousands of people and families who could not afford to wait? How do we address the plight of real people, our constituents, who are one rent hike away from losing their rental units and their tenancies? Mr. Jasso said it, but it was at the beginning and there were a lot of numbers here. But I'm going to repeat it because it is real in our community. Our rent trends are troubling. In 2017, renters in our city experienced an average increase at 9%, the highest year-to-year increase in the country. Too many people in our community struggle under an excessive rent burden. 95,000 renter households in Sacramento. 49,167 spend more than 30% of their income on rent. They are making choices then that have real impacts on their kids and their families around other basic items of life security, whether it be food or medicine or education. And maybe even more troubling is that more than 26,200 of the same people pay the landlord more than half of what they earn. And as Mr. Jasso laid out, and it's worth looking at again to all of my members here, no council district is immune. 51% of Sacramento's rental households are considered burdened by more housing costs than they can afford. And then there's our eviction rate. You know, we know just cause is a bad term. And certainly, as I get to describing what I would stand behind, I don't want to see the traditional just cause in the way that others might think about it. But you can't ignore the fact, I don't think, that our eviction rate is two and a half times higher than the statewide average. And five times higher, if I do my math correctly, with other cities that have more traditional just cause. So we face a delicate set of choices as a city, which is partly why we hold tonight's workshop and why I choose to bring these issues public. How do we, as a city, not harm our imperative to build more housing, ensure that property owners, I mean, make a fair return on their investments, which is absolutely right and valid, and protect renters who, through no fault of their own, are forced to choose between paying the rent or paying for other essential life expenses? I think what's come out of this, and again, Councilmembers Hanson and Geta and Jennings, I know will present their ideas, some of them, by the way, which would incorporate into what I've been talking with others about. But as I can report to you over what's happened over the last couple of months, there are sort of two lead choices that multiple stakeholders and I have quietly discussed over many, many months. Some leaders of the business community have made what they call the 3-3-3 proposal. And essentially, what it is, is the owners of 1,000 to 2,000 units in the city would opt in to a voluntary rent cap of, say, 3% per year. The city would then subsidize an additional 3%. That means that the landlord for the opt-in units would receive a maximum increase of 6% per year, while as many as 1,000 to 2,000 households would have their rent increases stabilized at no more than 3% per year. The city contribution would amount to about $450,000 per 1,000 participating units. In my opinion, and I only speak for myself under this form of government, we all have an equal vote. The proposal, in my opinion, has merit. It could protect 1,000 to 2,000 renters and their families. And because of this, I could support it despite the controversy, inevitable controversy around public investment. But in my opinion, and it's just my opinion, this well-intentioned proposal is good, but insufficient. For the city and its taxpayers cannot afford to help everyone who needs it. So the scope of the voluntary program would have to, by definition, be limited. Let me tell you why. It would cost the city about $11.8 million per year to help all those spending more than half of their income on rent, the population that is considered most severely rent burdened. We don't have $11.8 million annually for one piece of trying to solve our housing puzzle, especially when we want to put money into waive fees and do all the other things that we want to do. And so, again, politically, I don't know whether it would be easy or not because I think there'd be a lot of critics of this proposal. I'm sure the advocates and the proponents, my friends, I see you local 1,000 and the housing advocates who have submitted the initiative would decry many pieces of this proposal. And maybe they will tonight. But this is my, personally, as your mayor, my I-can't-sleep-at-night moment. I can support it, but it's only 1,000 to 2,000. And the numbers of rent burdened people are 49,000 plus on the 30% side and 26,200 on the 50% side. I can't say, in good conscience, with, even with the support of the business community, that we've solved the problem or that we've made a real dent in the problem, when the voluntary approach, well-intentioned and good, does not have the breadth and cover the numbers of people that are suffering. And so there is a second approach that could help those suffering now without creating permanent or even long-term rent stabilization in Sacramento. I would support a temporary 5% cap on annual rent crease, on annual rent increases that would remain in place for three years. It would apply only to units 20 years or older, consistent with Costa-Hawkins, even if Costa-Hawkins were repealed, so that we do not discourage developers from building new housing. Why 20 years? If you look at the statistics, there is an imperfect, it actually came from some folks in the business community. There is a correlation, not 100%, but a very strong overlap between those living in units 20 years or older and the 0% to 100% average median income who we measure as being rent burdened. It's not perfect, but the 20 years and the 30 and 50% red, rent burdened are pretty close. I would support allowing a higher rent increase to pay for necessary improvements and repairs. I would not support a separate rent board, which I know is Stokes' fear in many, in the business community because of its potential to be politicized. I would, I think it is fine for a hearing officer to efficiently address any disputes under the ordinance. I would support a limited informed notice requirement that would, yes, require that you don't evict somebody without a reason, but that it be adjudicated within the unlawful detainer process. No private rights of action, class actions, or any extrajudicial remedies. The notice issue would simply be determined, right or wrong, within an unlawful detainer proceeding. But it would protect people from being evicted unfairly. What's wrong with that? I would support exempting all owners who own five or fewer units. Heard from a lot of so-called mom and pops. And I get that. I would include all the other exemptions under the current Costa-Hawkins law as well, even if Costa-Hawkins were to be repealed at the state level. I recognize that neither of these proposed pathways is perfect. But members of the Sacramento community, from all walks of life, we are living through a crisis. Too many of our people are ending up on the street or making desperate choices to keep a roof over their heads. And by the way, it's not just those statistics. I can sit at Temple Coffee on 10th Street and have conversations with half dozen people who are not the most, who are not the severely mentally ill on the street, who can tell their stories about how tough it is and how they can't find a place to live and how they've been evicted because they can't afford the rent. And you know many stories like it as well. Not only is this issue a burden on our collective conscience, it ends up costing us more in the long run when the same people, Sacramentoans, wind up using publicly funded social service programs. I stated a few moments ago that I oppose long-term rent control. I agree with the argument that to do so, even despite the experience in Oakland and, and San Jose, that to do so at least has the potential to stifle supply. And we don't want to do that. But given this state of emergency, those who say no under any circumstances, even for a temporary period, can you prove this great harm that would befall our city if we provided temporary protection to people who currently cannot afford to stay in their places? This has got to be something more than philosophical here. There's got to be some practical middle ground. If you believe that no protection is appropriate, are you at least willing to acknowledge that many people will face what any reasonable person would consider to be a rent increase that they simply cannot afford? It's not government's job, I know, to ask, what is a fair rate of return? And maybe you should ask, what is a fair rate of return here? And does, and does gouging actually occur in this community? The politics of this issue are bad. I don't care. We have, we have a responsibility. We have a responsibility to make sure we don't stifle economic growth in this city and at the same time, to help the people that are hurting here. And if we can't figure this out together, then we're not working hard enough. I am confident that if we work together, we will find a path that will enable our city to grow a robust and modern economy, while always committing in word and in deed to include everyone, no matter their station in life. That is my, as we call it up here, my 1-2-3 report from the, from the far reaches of my corner office. And I want to open it up now to my colleagues. Before we take an hour apiece in public testimony, and I want us to talk about this. And I want to hear what you think. Because you're just as important. You represent all of these same folks. And you have some ideas yourself. I just want to make sure that we can legitimately try to answer some of the questions that I have raised this evening. Who wants to go first?
Where can the public get a hold of this proposal?
It's in the packet here and we passed it out.
I have a copy, but
Did you got, okay, how many? Hold on. We will It's part of the public record, but folks want to, how do we make sure? We will get everybody a copy, believe me. Is it on the website? Is it, is it? Can we cut down a couple of trees here? Okay, we will, if you, if you're patient here, we'll make sure that everybody, everybody has everything, okay? Okay, there's a stack down here and we'll, if, just We need, okay, of course. Okay. Can we, we are going to make sure all my colleagues. You got Larry? Everyone's got it? We all good?
There wasn't photocopy rights of the
There wasn't photocopy, right? No, we didn't include that because I just described that verbally. Yeah, the so-called 3-3-3 item, I did not, since it was not, I didn't come up with the proposal. I decided to describe it verbally instead of put it in, in writing. But again, I've stated for the record, I could, I certainly could stand behind the concept of, of public subsidy to help a couple thousand renters in units get, get some relief. Okay. As we pass this out, let's, let's begin with the vice mayor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your comments and your ideas. They're very thorough and thoughtful, as always. Because this issue has been going on for quite some time, a lot of us have been raising ideas over time, just like you have. And over the last week or two, Mr. Guerra and Mr. Jennings and myself have been talking about what we could do if there, if there ended up stalemate on this question of rent control versus not rent control. And we really want to do something to help people. So we've put together a list of ideas and we have a longer summary of it, a six-page handout. And you'll find a one page and the six page over here on the side, to the extent that we have copies. And we have the one page on the overhead. Earlier today, we, we raised these issues and I invite the other council members to address the pieces that they were most interested in. I'll just briefly give an overview, if that's okay, Rick and Eric. All right? So first, we really want to do something immediate that hopefully both tenants and landlords can, can see merit in. So while we've called this the Tenant Protection and Relief Act, it's by no means exclusive. And I think, Mr. Mayor, some of these things you raised and some of these things could be in addition to what you raised.
No question.
First of all, Councilmember Jennings wanted to ensure that tenants had long-term stability and wanted long-term leases. And we're advocating for an 18-month lease. And I'll let him talk about that. As, as, at the tenants' discretion, but that landlords would be required to offer that. Also, Councilmember Guerra has worked very hard on a mediation program. These are modeled on what some other jurisdictions in California do. The mediation program would be mandatory for landlords with five or more units and has a bunch of other provisions that Mr. Guerra can talk about. Fair noticing, which is the third bullet, which means that when a lease is signed, a tenant's informed of their rights in multiple languages and also directed to resources that can help them, including the proposed mediation program and longer-term leases. We have talked before about the decommissioning of the Fair Housing Commission and how that decommissioning in 2013 has imposed a burden on organizations like Self Help Housing that runs the Renter Assistance Helpline. And we'd like the city manager to provide funding immediately to the Rental Assistance Helpline to, to help support city residents, city tenants, who are right now trying to figure out what rights they have and what options they have if they're confronted with unfair rent increases. The last part was really the part that I worked on. So I'll address that. One is to create a catalytic housing fund so that projects, that are affordable housing projects for workforce housing, which is for families, senior housing or housing for the formerly homeless, that we have gap financing available the formerly homeless, that we have gap financing available to help those projects that are more than 80% funded be... come out of the ground. Right now, we have housing projects that through tax credits, state funds, and other resources can't be built because we don't have sufficient gap financing to help them come out of the ground. Some of the things in addition, Mayor, I think dovetail with what you said, eliminate city fees on affordable housing. We've also started the conversation with other jurisdictions that we're involved with in potentially reducing or eliminating their impact fees. Asking the city staff to develop a affordable housing team to look at how to help these projects get moved, get developed. That would include, hopefully, competing better for state cap and trade funds and lending our own expertise to that. That is something we have not been successful at before. Any other zoning barriers, and you covered that pretty well. And then finally, just developing the capacity to run the Catalytic Affordable Housing Fund and to implement some of these other programs. We have a lot of wonderful city staff, but I don't think that we've effectively brought together the right team to lead on housing policy, to create units, and to really help people. And we realize that some of these things are longer term, but as the mayor mentioned, some of these also provide immediate relief while we work on fixing the long-term housing balance of units available and hopefully get to at least that 5% equilibrium that would reduce rent increases, create more access to housing, and definitely provide affordable housing units. Rick, Larry?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Eric up first, or however you want to do it.
I'll just go very quickly to talk about one of the immediate tenant protections, which Vice Mayor Hanson mentioned, was the availability of an 18-month lease, which would provide no rent increases over the 18-month term. The landlord must offer the 18-month lease, and the tenant would have the ability, the sole discretion, to accept the 18-month lease and/or a lesser term. Some of the goals of that would be to increase the housing security for our residents, to stabilize housing costs for at least 18 months. Longer term, will provide families that peace of mind and allow them to budget adequately. Rental guidance, assistance, and education would be provided to the tenant as well as the landlord. And also, the main goal would be to prevent and eliminate displacements of people living in their homes. Kids that are going to schools, friends that are made in neighborhoods. And so give them the stability that they'll be in their home for at least 18 months.
Good. I'm going to ask a couple questions about the specifics. Let me turn it over to Councilmember Gueda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think, you know, Councilmember Hanson brought up the point of mediation. I do want to thank Ms. Byrd and Ms. Van Der Veen for their explanation. And there are multiple other examples throughout the state that we saw on mediation, Palo Alto, Santa Barbara. And I think, you know, looking at some of the lessons learned from those cities and figuring out how mediation can help and assist. Right now, I mean, the real goal of this is to protect tenants from arbitrary and unreasonable excessive rent increases. And the mediation process, I think, is one that helps not only educate the tenants to their rights, but also the landlord's responsibilities. And in like... All of us have been hearing from different folks in our community, tenants and also property owners. And we did hear from, I think, Ms. Van Der Veen brought up the issue of the mom and pops. And we understand that. And I received a lot of emails from folks who own two or three, you know, units. And so we looked at this and said, "Hey, why don't we look at those that have five or more units, really looking at the bigger entities." We're looking at this as a per-unit fee to fund the program as well. I was interested in hearing how the fee would work out. Again, one, requiring noticing and also making sure that the tenant is informed about what their rights are and how they can access mediation. And that would be on the responsibility at the time of the lease from the landlord. But also, part of what we're proposing, and we've asked, is that the city also take on more of this noticing and responsibility. Another component to this, as Councilmember Hanson brought up, was the, you know, proposing that we fund and support an existing good program, which is the Sacramento Self-Help Housing, and making sure that that hotline is adequately funded. Right now, they're at a capacity issue, so why don't we expand that issue to make sure that they have access to that information? Part of the mediation, too, we want to also provide consultation early. No one really wants to get into this back and forth. So if we can provide consultation, then maybe assist and get a lot of the questions that might resolve, the solutions done early, but then go straight into, if that doesn't work out, then we can go into mediation and try to find a good solution. You know, this would require good faith participation. And if at some point the landlord doesn't do the proper noticing or follow their part or involved in good faith, then that would be a defense in an unlawful detainer and for the tenant. And so, you know, I think in this situation, our current situation, if somebody ends up in unlawful detainer, that's the current law. No... That's a horrible situation for everybody. It's costly for the apartment or the landlord owner, and also for the tenant. If things don't go sideways, don't get resolved quickly, it could end up as a black eye or a dark record on their rental history and have an even difficult challenge finding another adequate, good place to stay. So we want to try to figure out, okay, how do we look at mediation to try to resolve this sooner and figure out a way to help this out? So we're proposing that we look at mediation as a strong point. Finally, I want to go back and reiterate a couple of those points. We want our city staff to look at some of our corridors, like Stockton Boulevard, Franklin Boulevard, a lot of vacant lots, and have a cross-disciplined strike team that can help us get quickly in constructing affordable housing, particularly in areas that have a great frequent bus system. Not everyone lives along the light rail system, but I know the 51 and on Peak 52 on Stockton Boulevard gets a 15-minute service. So we want to look at, how do we get people access to housing in places where we can provide them with other mobility options? And lastly, looking at eliminating the fees for affordable housing development projects. We got to figure out how to construct more. I think we heard it from the participants today and from the participants from our last workshop, that we have to get going on the actual construction on housing. I do want to thank and do a little shout-out to Senator Pan for working on Senate Bill 481 that hopefully will help us get the old San Juan Motel property off the ground. It's been vacant for a long time for exclusive affordable housing. And the city manager, I want to thank your staff, Consuela Hernandez, for her good work in getting that legislation to the governor's desk. We hope the governor will sign it in the next couple, few weeks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, if I could just wrap up real quick. Thank you, Councilmember Jennings and Gara. The final thing is, we'd also like the city to really look at using some of our resources to get this message out, advertising to tenants, either using our electronic billboards, which we have the right to put PSAs on, or any other channel, once we're able to get the education program together, because there's a big need to do public education. The final thing, though, is we'd like, within 30 days, to have the program back at Law &amp; Ledge with an ordinance drafted, Madam City Attorney, and to work with the city manager to implement the parts of the program that can be implemented quickly so that tenants get as immediate relief as possible.
That's very good. Okay. So members, of course, are free to say or ask anything they want. I just thought the way we might do this, just a suggestion, is that at this stage, we might ask some clarifying questions about the... I said that? The various concepts that are described and laid out here. And that argument or opinion, whatever, you can, at any time, but that we'd hear from the public, and then we'd summarize. I know I have some questions of clarity about some of the proposals, that I just want to understand them better, but however you want to handle it is fine. Councilman Carr.
I have several questions about it, but I need to, really, some time to consider this. To look at the proposals in detail and to consider the implications of them. And I'd like to remind the city manager, because I see him taking notes, that a lot of... Several councilmembers have asked you to do things that require a lot of city resources. And I remind you of the policy that we passed, that your direction would come from the city council as a whole, and it will come in writing. So what you're hearing are suggestions of things that might happen in the future. But as far as I'm concerned, you have received no specific direction at this point.
Councilmember Ashby. Sorry. There you go.
Okay. So first of all, thank you to the mayor and his team that I presume put this sheet together. Is that correct?
Yes.
And also, thank you to Vice Mayor Hanson and Councilmembers Gara and Jennings, who I presume put this entire package together, right? So first time I'm seeing either one, although I've obviously heard components of all of them, I hear lots of things in there that I like, but I, too, have tons of questions. And I don't think now is the best use of time for me to ask all of those. I need to do some research on my own as well, think about the ramifications. And I want to hear from the people in the room. So I don't... I think I've heard a lot from this side. I'd like to hear from that side. And I'm with Councilmember Carr on this one. Sounds like there's some... Some of these things are in direct competition with each other. We couldn't do both. We'd have to choose from some. So I need to take a look at that, try to figure out where I'm at, what I think is best for the city of Sacramento and how it impacts the district that I represent and the constituents that I represent on this dais. So thank you for putting the extra effort into these, all of you. It's really helpful. But now I need a chance to digest them and do some research myself, as Councilmember Carr has also suggested. And I, too, am nervous about proposals coming back before we can wrap our minds around what these are first. And then maybe that would help us give clearer, unified guidance on what we do next and whether that's Law &amp; Ledge or back to city council or whatever. But I think it's very confusing for our city manager to receive two sets of direction with really expeditious timelines like 30 days, so without unity on the council. At any rate, I do really greatly appreciate the amount of time and energy you've all put into this. I think it's very helpful.
Well, we'll certainly work with the city manager. You know, the only thing I would, of course, to do this in the right way, but I appreciate from Vice Mayor and others, the sense of urgency, right? So you want to get it back in 30 days? I don't know whether that's right or reasonable or not, but I personally appreciate the sense of urgency around all of this because we are living in a crisis for people.
Respectfully, I think what I heard Councilmember Carr say was, "The item could come back in 30 days for review on what's here," but the direction to take things farther than this would need to wait until there was a clearer direction.
I agree with... No, I agree with you. We just... We have a lot to work out in terms of timelines. I just wanted to say that I just appreciated the sentiment behind the urgency. So that's all. I agree with everybody, okay? Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be very brief. And I, too, you know, recognize that the good work that my council colleagues and the mayor has done, I appreciate it. But I do think that we are... I mean, we're in a crisis. I think all of us acknowledge that. But I think we really have to understand, you know, the path we go forward, the path that we take, really has to produce the results that we want. And so I think that, you know, without understanding the implications from all of the things that we are putting forward right now, it makes it very challenging because we do not want to, as the mayor puts, stifle investment. And ultimately, it's going to require this city to develop a lot more housing units to help deal with the housing crisis. But also, we have people that are hurting right now and people in need. And so I, too, like Councilman Carr and Ashby, as well as the rest of my colleagues on the council and the mayor. I think we really need to understand what the impacts of what we're bringing forward are going to make happen. And so I am very eager to dive into this discussion and try to come up with a solution as quickly as possible that we can bring back to council and act on. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. So I just want to ask some questions about some of these proposals I find intriguing. I want to begin with the 18-month lease option. Is the idea, if we were to pass an ordinance, let's just say, requiring the landlord to offer an 18-month lease option, would that apply to existing tenants? In other words, let's say a tenant is in the middle of a one-year lease or has a current month-to-month. Would that requirement be for the landlord to offer them a new 18-month lease? Or would it only apply to new units or renewed leases? Or how would that work? Because month-to-month, for example, but how would it apply in that way?
So the current proposal does apply to current existing leases and to new leases. So it applies to both. And it requires that the landlord offer it to the tenant, and the tenant then has the opportunity to accept the 18-month or something less than that.
Okay. And this... And so you are in the middle of a lease. We pass this ordinance, the intent is to offer the 18-month option to that tenant. Yes? That's good. Okay. Second question. Is the intent that... What is the intent about the allowable rent increase during the 18-month period that the lease... The new lease would be in existence? Would it be... You impose the new... Okay, so so-and-so has got a lease. Joe Jones has the lease, month-to-month. It is... A new 18-month lease is offered. The tenant says yes. Is there any restriction or limitation on how much, if at all, the owner can increase the rent before the 18-month lease goes into effect?
Well, I mean, there's... If you've already locked in your lease, you have a contractual obligation.
No, it's month-to-month. It's month-to-month.
Our intent with the 18-month lease is that there be no rent increase during that period of time. So if a tenant accepts an 18-month lease, that lease rate is good for the entire duration.
Okay. But I'm not being picky. I really want to understand this because I actually think this has the potential to be a very hopeful concept here. Because I'm always looking to find the intersections here, but I want to understand it. So they offer... So it is September 5th, and the landlord, the owner says, "I'm offering you the 18-month lease option effective October 1st." And during the period of time, as you just stated, they can't raise the rent during that 18-month period, fine. What can they do prior to October the 1st? Can they raise it 10% in anticipation of the fact that it will be flat for the 18 months? Is there a limitation prior to the imposition of the 18-month requirement about how much you can raise the rent?
Well, I would say, Mr. Mayor, let's take a step back.
Okay.
And look at what the goal of this is. This is to provide stability for enough planning so that someone... And what we've heard is that rents are increasing, if you're in a month-to-month situation. So if those are details that we should figure out and iron out how to resolve, we could. I don't know if we can do that at this dais tonight.
I'm not saying we can't. I just want to understand.
But I think the goal here is to look at stability, right? I mean, that's... That is... And predictability. Those are the two... Those are the two key things, is stability.
So I think the real answer, too, is why the mediation program's important, because the mediation program benefits every tenant, is mandatory for the landlord. And if rent is increased by more than 6% within a 12-month period, the tenant can request mediation, and the mediation would be binding. And so they work together in that scenario.
Okay. Well, so I want to say something very positive here, which is my way. And again, many questions to be answered here, but this is as much for my colleagues as some of the stakeholders out here, who I assume had some heart in helping to craft this. If the idea is that rents really remain stable for 18 months for the tenant, and if there isn't an ability to game that, i.e. to raise the rent really high before the 18-month piece goes into effect, it isn't that different, except in timeframe, from the three-year rent cap that I have described. Now, we argue for something longer than 18 months. I proposed a three-year cap, but conceptually, if you're trying to keep rent stable during that period and there's no ability to game ahead of time, then I think that there's the potential of... There is the potential of... there is the potential of, of trying to weave concepts together in a way that might lead us to a solution. But the, the gaming question is an obvious one, right? Because it's one thing when you, the 18 months is flat, but what happens prior to the, what happens prior to the 18 months? And I get that mediation, you say, may, may be part of that, I got you. It's fine, it's good.
We've been waiting a while now.
No, no, wait, no, no, you, no ma'am, you've elected this council to have exactly this kind of discussion, and we will open this up in a very few minutes to the public, we absolutely will, and hear, and hear from you. But this, this is, we're doing our jobs here, and this is the way we should do our jobs. So, thank you for that, that clarity on, on that, I think, interesting, interesting proposal. Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor, and I also want to thank everyone for coming, and I'm looking forward to hearing what you all have to say. I agree with my counterparts here that this is new, that I, like you, haven't seen a proposal that Mr. Hanson, Mr. Garrett, and Mr. Jennings put out until this afternoon. And I've had a couple of discussions with folks along the way, but this is, this is a point where it's a balance, right? It's a balance between short-term solutions for people who we know are in need, that we have a responsibility for, plus long-term viability, economic viability of our city, and continuing to increase the supply, which we know is incredibly important. And I actually want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think the, the last workshop we had around housing was excellent, I learned a lot. I think this is really important, and just want to reiterate that it's really, I don't know if people understand this, it's really hard for us to have these types of discussions because of the Brown Act, we can't do it outside of this venue. So we need to take, and this dais does not, it's not the best situation to have those anyways, but it's the only one we have.
I feel like I'm just talking with friends here, that's it, right?
So, so I, I appreciate the patience in giving us the opportunity to have these conversations, because these are, this is really important. And I don't think, you know, this is a little bit of the John Wooden, be quick but don't hurry, we need to do this right. And I think if we asked either San Jose, or Berkeley, I'm sorry, Berkeley, or Oakland, how long it takes them, and how many hours they put into deliberations around this issue, it would be significant. And to come forward and say, within an hour or two, we're going to go back and, and write an ordinance, we're not quite ready for that. But I, but I hope we will be soon. There's a couple of things that I'd like to request, and as we get to the end of information that I would need to be able to make a good decision. So, first of all, on the proposal, so we have multiple sets of proposals, we also have heard from two other cities, and I know we've all done our own research on this. I think, Michael, this is probably you, is, is trying to take these things one at a time for us, and I'll wait for a consensus of the council before, I'm not asking you to do it today, but what we need to do is look at all these pieces of the puzzle, do a little bit of cost-benefit on each one of them, and what they would cost to implement, and how feasible they might be for us. So if you go down the list, you can look at what the mayor's put forward, you can look at the second proposal that we saw today, and maybe even take some of the things that we heard from the other cities. I think that would be really helpful for us to make a database decision on this versus what we've heard within an hour or two hours' worth of work. So, number one, I'm hoping we can do that, and whether you want to bring that back to the full council, whether you want to vet it first with, at law and ledge, I think is a decision of the council, and either way, it's fine. But I think we need all of that data to be able to have the next step of the conversation. I'd also like to hear, and tonight, I think will be hard as an immediate reaction, but we have a lot of advocacy groups in the business community, what do you see in these two proposals? That's good, that's bad, so that we can take that into consideration. And Mr. City Manager, if you could figure out some kind of process to accept that information, kind of cull through it and get it back to the council, I think that would be really helpful. And then, third, for me, which is, is, becomes so incredibly clear over these discussions over the last couple of months, is we need to think really hard about building our own infrastructure as a city to be able to do this. 20 people, the city manager almost fell off his chair on that one. But what do we need, and, and it's going to obviously relate back to what type of program we come forward with, but what do we need as infrastructure, and how do we build that? What I don't want us to do is get ahead of the infrastructure that we don't have and start a program that will ultimately fail if we don't have the right people behind it to figure it out and do that. So, I think that's a really important piece. With that, I'll stop, and I'm looking forward to the comments here, and open to discussions as we go forward over the next weeks and months on this.
Yes. Couldn't Members Carr and Geta, do you want to wait to the public, or do you have some clarity, clarity questions?
Just want to add a couple of things.
Yeah.
First of all, Jay's right on, we need to understand the implications and the cost-benefits for the proposals as much as they can be understood. And some of them lend itself like 25 cent production and, and plan review time. What is that going to cost us? How much are we going to add to it? And I think we can do a certain amount of that research for some of these things, for others, there are, there are more implications. What are the, what happens if we implement this? What are the, what are the pros and cons of implementing it? And I'm not sure that, since the people who are here just received these documents, that they could help us understand the implications of each one of these issues as we go along. So, I know people are going to come to speak, but what would really be helpful for me, anyway, is what are the implications of a specific item on either one of these sheets? As opposed to, I'm in favor of rent control, I'm not in favor of rent control. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Councilman Geta, then we will open it up to the public testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In that vein, I, I agree with Councilmember Carr and Warren, who brought up that the implications of the issue is critical, and to Councilmember Chenier's point, getting the data is important. And I appreciate that we had the two case study situations here of cities. But, you know, I recently saw a proposal, a presentation to the Sacramento Bar Association by one of our local economists here at, of course, you know, Myalman Modern Sac State. And, and I think, you know, it'd be appropriate to get a, somebody who actually developed the, the graduate program in Urban and Land Institute here in Sacramento, to give a perspective on what are the actual implications. So we should, I, I think we should reach out to Sac State and see if Dr. Robert Wasmer, you know, who I remember being grilled for my thesis on him, and he's quite the, the griller there, to, to come in and look at, and give us an assessment of what these implications and how they would impact the city.
Very good. Jay?
Councilman Chenier.
Thanks, just really quickly, so my office has posted both proposals on social media for, on our social media, so it's out there on the internet, people want to pick it up.
Okay, very good, thank you. So, we have 74 speakers. So, and, so here's what we're going to do, we're going to, we're going to do a maximum of an hour apiece. Pros and cons, okay?
Each person.
An hour, not an hour per person, by the way. That's an hour, an hour per side. But for the folks who came here organized, on both sides, the council would appreciate if you would designate a few lead spokespeople, and came on up and, and presented, and then we can take shows of hands, people can get up and say, "Me too." It doesn't, won't impact, believe me, the, the members, except in a potentially difficult way, to hear the same thing again and again, same people organized. So if it's possible, we could, we could do a half-hour apiece, really, and I think get through everyone. I'm going to do an hour, because I think that's what's right, but please organize and see if we can move through quickly. All right? And we can take written comments, and this isn't the last hearing, we're not voting tonight. Okay? So if everyone will please try, I would sure appreciate it. We'll begin with support.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Larry.
Could we have a short, five-minute recess to give them a chance to do that?
Okay.
Let's go. Come on, let's go.
Oh, please, relax.
It's nonsense.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Five minutes sounds nice to me.
Well, okay, Councilmember Carr's suggestion, there are 30 in support and 60 opposed, I don't, I don't know, it's, it's.
What about two minutes?
I think it was a fine idea, but maybe we can do it as we go here, is that all right? And members can get up from the dais if you need, okay. Support, let's start, let's start calling the, start calling the people. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to remind folks that members who wish to address the council should have completed a speaker slip, we're no longer accepting speaker slips. And so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council, members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outline decorum expected in the chambers and can be found on our website, the copy's at the back of the room, and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disrupting conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. Each speaker has two minutes to address the council, and the cordless microphone or assisted listening device is available from the clerk at the front of the room. So, in favor, I have 31 speakers, the first is Robert Copeland, Fabrizio Sasso, Michelle Parissett, and if you wouldn't mind.
They just, hold on, they just, they just, they're organizing per our, I guess Councilmember Carr's request is being acceded to, in a way.
Thank you, and I will call a few names so that you can line up.
Okay, when we say in favor, it's in general in favor of some form of regulation, it's all regulation, but more, more in line with what I suggested. Oppose, obviously, not much in line with what I suggested. So, Copeland, go ahead.
Mayor Steinberg, people came from San Jose and Oakland, covered a lot of what I was going to say, in support of rent control. One, why are you doing halfway measures, 1,000 or 2,000 for three years? You should do more people. Mayor Steinberg, I'd like to hear why you took so long to do this workshop, and why the opposing side hasn't come to city council to bill more affordable housing, or any kind of housing. I'd like to hear from the opposing side why they're not here often.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Fabrizio Sasso, Michelle Parissett, and Cassandra Jennings.
They're, they're the organizers, the proponents who are out in this, so let's, let's set the.
If I read your, if I read someone else's name, if they want to come to the middle, and then.
We'll get right back to them as soon as they come back in the room, okay?
And then announce your name, Cassandra Jennings.
There you are, Fabrizio, yes, sir.
Fabrizio Sasso, Michelle Parissett, and then Cassandra Jennings, and then Toby Todd.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, Fabrizio Sasso, Executive Director of the Sacramento Central Labor Council, AFL-CIO. This is the first time I've seen the counter-proposal, or alternate proposal, set forth by Councilmembers Jennings, Garrett, Hanson, so I don't have a whole lot to say about it, but on the face of it, it looks incomplete, and it looks counter to what the mayor has proposed in section four of his proposal. So, I just want to say that I was going to talk a little bit about development, but I think the experts made it very clear that development, development's not hindered through rent control. We, I am a proud member, the Sacramento Central Labor Council's a proud member of the Housing for Sacramento Coalition. We are the ones who are putting the rent control measure on the ballot, we have submitted the signatures and the petitions last week, so we're, we're looking forward to continuing this discussion, I think there's a lot here to discuss. You know, just last week, I was talking to a woman, a single mother, her name is Lisa, she has a, a son, she lives in the Fruit Ridge area, and it's unfortunate that Mr. Garrett is not here to hear this, because this is one of his constituents, but she was talking about her job at the grocery store, and how her biggest fear, even though her son has some health issues, her biggest fear is not his health issues, but her ability to pay the rent. And she has to make difficult choices every single day about, and not about his medical treatment, because she doesn't have to worry about that, she has a union job, but she has to make difficult choices about paying for her food or paying the rent. And this speaks to Maslow's hierarchy of needs, where the most basic needs, the physiological, is threatened by the need for safety and shelter. We shouldn't be putting people in this position. And the mayor's proposal was going to offer relief to hard-working Sacramentans right now. The 3-3-3 proposal by the business community, that's a scam. Corporate landlords want taxpayers to subsidize their profits, this is a lavish giveaway to the rich. The proposal, you, you have choices to make, but I urge you to listen, I'm wrapping up, you have choices to make, I urge you to listen to the voices of the ones who are struggling, not just the folks who profit off of that struggle.
Time, Fabrizio, please, thank you, sir.
Time is complete.
And, and I just want to say that we've had those conversations.
Sasso.
With 40,000 residents, with 40,000 voters, and we hope.
Our next speaker is Michelle Parissett, Cassandra Jennings, then Toby Todd.
Oh, welcome.
Good evening, council and mayor. I'm Michelle Parissett with Public Advocates, we're members of the Housing for Sacramento Coalition, I'm one of the three named proponents on the Sacramento Community Stabilization and Fair Rent Charter Amendment, along with the fantastic Omega Brewer and amazing Margarita Maldonado. I'm also a homeowner and a landlord in District 6. Housing for Sacramento was proud to turn in our petitions last Thursday to put our initiative to a vote in 2020. However, we are keenly aware that renters in Sacramento need help before 2020. That's why we've been meeting with Mayor Steinberg since the spring, to find solutions that help renters in our city now. Housing for Sacramento supports the mayor's three-year rent cap plan, it's not our favorite, but it's important, because we need to do something for tenants now. These solutions work in other cities, and they are, by orders of magnitude, better than waiting decades for developers to build our way out of this problem, or the 3-3-3 solution proposed by the business community, which is insufficient in scope and expensive to taxpayers, or the proposal from Councilmembers Jennings, Hanson, and Garrett, which shows a lack of understanding for the scope of the problem, and appears to have been written without any input from local housing advocates or tenants groups. Last Thursday, we submitted tens of thousands of signatures, by our calculation, we submitted signatures from more, from about 20% of all registered voters in the city of Sacramento. We had conversations with way more than that. The scale of the numbers we needed to make it to the ballot is, is a big lift. But I have to tell you that converting those conversations into signatures was easy. The vast majority of folks we talked with signed petitions. The people of Sacramento are ready for a solution that includes a rent cap and eviction protections. We support the mayor's plan, we hope that the council can get behind him and really support him in that, but whatever happens, and whatever agreement gets cobbled together, Housing for Sacramento is taking our initiative to the ballot.
Parissett, your time is complete.
Because the people of Sacramento deserve better than what this council is doing.
Parissett, your time is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cassandra Jennings, then Toby Todd, then Margarita Maldonado.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of council. Cassandra Jennings, President and CEO of the Greater Sacramento Urban League. I too, like many of you, have already commented that I came to the workshop to hear, to listen, and certainly to comment. I, where I'm not in a position now to say whether I support long-term rent control, I do think that we do need to address some temporary solutions. I did hear from the presenters about we need to understand our community and our, the ownership structure here, and it is vast and complex. We are in a community that's underserved, that needs to talk about affordable housing, certainly quality housing stock and the availability. But in addition, there certainly is room to talk about how we deal with rent control. I am concerned that rent control can kill affordable housing and exacerbate the rental crisis that we're in now. We do need, though, to increase our housing stock, and so any efforts that the city can do to streamline the process and the fees to accelerate the development of affordable housing is certainly supported by us. And I think, Mayor, you had mentioned that in your proposal. The temporary focus, I think, should also be on units and some kind of cap. It could be obtained by, and I, I'm just hearing this information too, it could be contained, obtained by a lease amount, but I think what is important is that people are not in, in month-to-month leases, where it's, their lease, their rent is increased a lot. I think if the city, and I listened to the three-by-three, if the city is interested in submitting, in subsidizing anything, it should be in rehab. And then finally, I'll say. And then finally, I'll say to the point that councilmember Shanier, is we need to look at the regional impact of what we will do, because we are one city within a region that could have an adverse effect. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Toby Todd, Margarita Maldonado, Giovanna Fajaro, and then Jonah Paul.
Good evening, council. This is just really, I came to present an idea. The rail yards, converting the trains into housing. I don't know if anybody's ever heard or thought about anything like that, but the trains are there, they're sturdy, and for the homeless. So, that's all I just really want to say, converting the trains and things into housing.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Margarita Maldonado, Giovanna Fajaro, Jonah Paul.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers. I think that this is the right conversation to be having. It is very late for this conversation to be having, and I'm not speaking to the time of day that it is right now, but just the amount of crisis that we are standing in today. We first started looking at this issue in Housing for Sacramento almost a year ago. And we have been working with community-based organizations for quite some time. We've been in the community with your constituents. We've been knocking on doors with your constituents. We are not out there talking to developers. However, the mayor brought us into a conversation and tried to have a conversation with people from the business community, and tried to put on the table, what can we do to reach some level of compromise to provide instant relief? They walked away from the table. They weren't interested. To this day, we still continue the conversations with the mayor. We're not totally in love with what he's putting on the table. He knows we're not in love with it.
Really?
Very clearly, we are not in love with it. We know that our initiative is set to go to the ballot in 2020. We need immediate relief. It's way too late for this problem still to be occurring. All of you, every single one of you, have the responsibility, the obligation, and you should have the will to fix it. It is within your jurisdiction. This new proposal, that I would say just came out at the twenty-third hour, is not sufficient. I know, because of the conversations that we've had, there are some return on investments that have already been considered with the mayor's proposal. Even listening to some of your explanation, I know these are complex issues, but you don't have them fully laid out of how they would actually work. So, why don't you take a look at the leadership that the mayor has put forward and take it into consideration? Thank you.
Thank you. Giovanna Fajaro, Jonah Paul, and then Veronica Beatty.
Good evening. So again, my name is Giovanna Fajardo with ACE, and I'm here talking behalf of my tenants that had to go home, that weren't feeling good. In particular, the elderly tenants who got their rent increase nine months after the last one. And, you know, we had Jay Shanier there to talk to them, and sadly, several of them just moved out this month, because they know that rent increase is coming. They don't have the stability to know that they could pay that rent increase or when that rent increase is coming. And that apartment complex is for-profit affordable housing. What we're talking about then is other apartment complexes where families are working two to three jobs, not sure if they're going to get a rent increase next month, if they're going to get it next year, that they also know that they're getting higher bills for sewage or for water that they weren't paying before. So, even though if the statistics in the city are saying that rents aren't going that much, going that high, these families are hurting with parking passes for seventy-five dollars that they weren't paying last year, for utilities and for sewage of fifty dollars a month they weren't paying last year. So, they're taking extra money, and these families are being taken advantage. I'm not saying all landlords are bad. My parents are landlords, and the idea is having fair, right? But these families are about to be living on the streets, and we can't do that. We need to put affordable and fair housing for all families, and make sure that there are some limits, right? If you, that's why they put speeding limits. If you are not speeding, then you don't need to worry about that ticket at the end of the day, if you're doing right and following the law. And that's all we're saying. Make it fair, so that these families could stay in their homes and they're not having to move, or figure out where they're going to live, if they're going to just live in their car next week, or see if they have to live with their grown adult children. Because we've been coming to you guys. We were actually denied a meeting with Larry Carr to try to have these conversations. We've been around, so, thank you.
Our next speaker is Jonah Paul, Veronica Beatty, Tristan Brown, and then Matthew Baker.
Hello, I'm Jonah Paul. I'm with the Democratic Socialists of America. And first, I just wanted to thank the two women from Oakland and San Jose for their very helpful testimonies on the effectiveness of rent control. And I also wanted to thank the mayor for having this conversation and opening it up, being open to the ideas that we've been putting forward for the last year. I think this is a step in the right direction. And, you know, as a socialist, I don't think that this is a, I don't know, a black or white issue. Obviously, rent control is just a step towards the kind of world that we want to see. I would say, though, that I'm not even afraid of the temporary nature of this proposal, because if measure U is an indication, temporary can mean a long time in Sacramento. But, that said, you know, this is a step in the right direction. My personal experience canvassing for this all year has been that we are in a desperate crisis. This is especially true for people on fixed incomes. My grandfather, who just passed away recently, lived in a rent-controlled apartment in New York City and was able to live there safely from nineteen sixty-two till today, or to this year. So, it is a really effective way of keeping the elderly housed and healthy. He lived to the age of ninety-two. So, thanks again for continuing this conversation, and I look forward to developing it and making it stronger.
Veronica Beatty, Tristan Brown, Matthew Baker, Annabelle Vera. Veronica? And if you folks would line up in the middle aisle, that would be fantastic.
I'm Veronica Beatty, the Policy Director for the Sacramento Housing Alliance and a member of the Housing for Sacramento Coalition. To stabilize Sacramento, we need to protect tenants from excessive rent increases and unfair evictions. Without rent stabilization, double-digit rent increases push our neighbors out of their homes, onto the streets, and away from our city. The data from Eviction Lab we started tonight with is a great starting point, but more recent research has shown that there are even more evictions in Sacramento County than had been counted by Stanford. In 2016, we saw about twenty-three evictions a day in the county. The 3-3-3 proposal is arbitrary. We've talked already about how it doesn't fit the scale of the crisis, and it uses our limited public money to underwrite landlords' rent increases on tenants that are already paying too much. Want to remind us today, again, about the importance of thinking about who owns our rental stock. Not all landlords are mom-and-pops. Twenty percent of our rental stock is owned by one of ten entities. That is the scale of ownership we are talking about for the majority of Sacramentoans. So, the Tenant Protection and Relief Act, I was interested to see the concept of mediation come up again. The Sacramento Housing Alliance has been speaking with the mayor for more than a year about various mediation programs throughout the state. And what we concluded was that, in the cities that have mediation programs, first of all, very few tenants access them. And for those that do, they don't find the relief they need. We know that unlawful detainers primarily come from failure to pay rent, and we talked about how evictions disrupt lives, as councilmember Garrett said. It becomes a black mark on your record. In the city of Fremont, they have an eviction program, or they have a mediation program that, over the course of three years, only managed to reduce rent for nineteen tenants. Over half of Sacramento's renters are overpaying rent. We can't find something that works for only nineteen people over the scale of three years.
Ten seconds, please.
I'm excited to hear about the proposals about new affordable housing funding. I think both proposals included the waiving of fees for affordable housing construction. The Housing Alliance has been a longtime advocate of both of those, and is excited to see them in this proposal. But fundamentally, we need rent stabilization and eviction protections.
Thank you, Ms. Beatty, your time is complete.
And there's only one proposal that does that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tristan Brown, Matthew Baker, and Annabelle Vera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members. Tristan Brown from District Seven, and just like to speak in support of the mayor's five percent proposal because of how it will cauterize the wound that I think we all are seeing in Sacramento and the cost of living here in this town. And too often, we hear a false narrative that the solutions are only either rent control or increases to the housing supply. And given the testimony we heard today from the fabulous presenters from our neighboring cities, I think we need to take a crowbar to that mentality and get it just out of our heads. It has been proven now that these things can coexist. A supply-side solution suggesting that we can merely build our way out of this crisis with private dollars ignores the multitude of data showing how supply-side projects only exacerbate wealth gaps and the suffering of innocent lives like our children who have to grow up in what would be institutionally constructed poverty and racism. There is no timeline or incentive for for-profit builders to provide the low-income options we need to address the thousands of residents that face impending homelessness, especially with an impending recession that has been long predicted in our near future. The supply and demand formula is simple. Vast sums of capital are ready to build and buy real estate at market-rate prices to serve as long-term mortgage and rental-backed securities. This means that the prices will not be within reach of many without a concerted effort to control our own economic well-being. This isn't, we're not building more California. There is only a limited amount of land that we can actually use. Requiring controls on rent gouging and discriminatory evictions will make Sacramento a destination city for the next generation, those millennials and Gen Z folks who seek out justice in their products, in their employers, and in their government. Furthermore, spending public funds on subsidies, credits, and waivers could be done in a much more efficient and beneficial manner if we look at public banking. This is an idea where we can actually start to build low-income housing ourselves without reliance on the private market if we use Federal Reserve dollars. So, I speak in favor of the imperfect five percent plan in hopes we continue to work on a policy that can get us to a great city and take care of everyone that needs it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Matthew Baker, Annabelle Vera, Russell Rawlings. Is Matthew here?
Russell had to leave.
Matthew's not, Russell is not Annabelle Vera. Calling Annabelle is Rosario Ramirez, and then Yvonne Walker.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name's Annabelle Vera. I'm a member of the Democratic Socialists of America, and I'm a resident, and I work in the city of Sacramento. We've seen tonight, rent control advocates have cited numerous studies from top researchers and universities, given real-world examples in major California cities, to show that rent control is one of our best effective options at keeping people in their homes and off the streets. But at times, it feels like, you know, for as much evidence as we present, how many testimonials we give, considering the tens of thousands of signatures of people who support broad-based rent control, you know, it's kind of not being heard fully. I'm thrilled that the conversation has moved in the direction it has, and I'm very impressed by the proposal that Mayor Steinberg has put forward. I'm just hoping that we can move forward still towards a more comprehensive rent control, because what it will do is finally put the dignity and safety of everyday renters above the profits of corporate landlords and developers. The city council still insists that, you know, our conversation hinges on the deregulation of construction, which usually tends to go towards these fancy lofts similar to the R-street ice blocks, and we just have to hope that someday this kind of translates into lower rents for middle and low-income renters. You know, but we see that these trickle-down economics, you know, we don't see them work in any other way, so why should they work for housing? We know developers will never build to the point of below market rates, because at that point, their profit motive is gone. So, just imploring you, please put the lives of hard-working residents above the profits for corporate landlords, and let's see a really comprehensive rent control measure put forward. You know, and I endorse the Housing for Sacramento Charter Amendment that was put forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Rosario Ramirez, then Yvonne Walker, and Omega Brewer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosario Ramirez. I work for SEIU USWW, but also, we're a member of Housing for Sacramento. We represent forty-five thousand members in the whole state, and we have around two thousand members here in the city of, in the county of Sacramento. I want to tell you about the stories of our members. Every day, we have a member come into our office telling us how their lives are being impacted by the crisis that we have right now here in the city. They come and tell us that landlords actually just increased their rent one hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars more a month, without any excuse. Our members have to decide, don't forget, these are janitors and security officers. A lot of the security officers that actually are taking care of you right now as we have this meeting, the janitors that cleans a lot of the buildings here in the city of Sacramento and county, these are the janitors who have to look at their kids and tell them, you know what? I won't be able to buy you the toy that you want. You know what? I won't be able to take you to the places that you want. You know what? I won't be able to get you the Christmas present that you always wanted. Why? Because we have to pay the rent right now. You know what? I won't be able to feed you today, because their rent are increasing. For a janitor who's making eleven ninety, for a janitor who's making eleven twenty-five, you guys don't think that a hundred dollars, or two hundred dollars, or three hundred dollars is a big impact in their buckets? Yes, it is. It is. Families right now have to decide if they can pay the rent or feed their families. So, I'm telling you right now, this is the city council and the mayor who's going to keep families together and in their houses, or is going to put families on the street. So, I encourage everyone to come together with community to make sure that we keep our families in Sacramento and we don't destroy Neverhorns and pull kids out of their own schools, because we cannot come together to consensus. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yvonne Walker, then Omega Brewer, and then Alexis Engelmann.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Good to see you all. I really think that, I appreciate this conversation. Before I start, I want to say that it is not just rent control. It is not just affordable housing. It's also accessible housing. Also, for folks out there that have a hard time finding that, I just want to put a face on what we're talking about, because you're going to hear a lot of numbers. You're going to hear it from developers. You're going to hear it from my colleagues, and all of them are true. But let me put a face on it, and where it became a face for me. I met a member last year who took a promotion in state service, and in state service, we're paid pretty well. You know, average, middle-class. Took a promotion from Fresno to Sacramento and was living in his car because he could not afford rent in Sacramento. There has to be something really wrong with that. Sacramento has always been an affordable city. I grew up here in the summers, learned how to swim in Sacramento. So, I remember the Sacramento from old, right? And it was a place where families could not only survive, families could thrive. And we're on a threshold, and we keep talking about a crisis. A crisis. People are paying over fifty percent for their rent. That's a crisis. That's a problem. And fortunately for us, it's a problem that you can address. It's not an insurmountable problem. It's not a problem we're going to build our way out of. I actually came to appreciate the mayor's proposal. Not initially, but it grew on me, because it is saying, like, you know, there is a crisis. And when there's a crisis, what's the first thing you do? You stop the bleeding. And then you proceed to go on and do whatever triage you need to get the people healthy. That's what the mayor's proposal is doing, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping that the rest of the council, as you look at this, and you're going to get a lot of papers, a lot of facts and figures, but I'm hoping that you're looking at the people that are sitting behind this, because they're in crisis.
Our next speaker is Omega Brewer. I do have fifteen more speakers. Omega Brewer, Alexis Engelmann, Emma Chavez, and then Sally Sefiro.
Good evening. My name is Omega Brewer, and I've held quite a few roles in the city, and I'm here to you, here to speak to you as the political coordinator for SEIU Local 2015, who represent over three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand long-term care workers, of which twenty-four-thousand are here in this city. And I'm also here as a Sacramento, someone who was a transplant from Los Angeles, whose parents bought a home in Sacramento, whose parents passed away in Sacramento. Sacramento is my home, and it's home for many long-term care workers. Twenty-four thousand of them, quite frankly. And long-term care workers, they don't make a lot of money. Most of you know that we fought long and hard, they fought long and hard, to receive their first increase in years and are currently on the pathway for a dollar above minimum wage. Minimum wage whilst in California, we're generous.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, stop just a second. I'm sorry. I know it's an accident, but if you could just, everyone, please turn off your phones. You just said that at the beginning, I appreciate it. Please resume, I apologize.
The members that I, the people, the. The members that I, the people, the women, primarily women of color, that I represent, that I'm proud to represent, gave up, a lot of them gave up jobs. They gave up well-paying jobs. They gave up jobs that paid mortgages to care for a loved one, to make a difference. And these are the same people who are hurting, just like the janitors, just like the security officers. These are parents of disabled children. They're people like me, who had a disabled parent and didn't have the benefit of a father who was a veteran, like me, who was able, whose pension was able to care for his wife beyond his own life. My members make choices all the time between food and housing. They make choices, bless you, they make choices between medicine for not just them, but their consumer, which is in a lot of cases their family member, and housing. It doesn't have to be. The mayor's proposal is sound. The mayor's proposal is an excellent start, and it will bring real immediate relief to the people of Sacramento.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Alexis Engelmann, Emma Zaviz, Sally Sefiro, Shawna Thrower.
I have to run to the restroom. I'm sorry. I will listen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Alexis Engelmann. As a homeowner and educator with over 23 years of classroom teaching experience in Sacramento, and I've lived in Sacramento for about 25 years, I've seen firsthand the impacts of housing instability has had on a child's education. Students who change schools during the school year have challenges acclimating to the new school, pace of the curriculum, and collaborating with peers. These students require, on average, two weeks to acclimate to the new environment, creating and expanding gaps in their educational knowledge and application of skills. Recently, an article in Education Weekly stated, "Students who move multiple times associated with low, lower school engagement, poorer grades in reading and math, and a higher risk of dropping out in high school, and were about a year behind or more academically than their classmates." I have personally experienced students who are three or more years academically behind their peers. They require more intervention and academic resources to be successful and on grade level as they don't have the skills to demonstrate acquisition of grade-level skills successfully in the daily curriculum. This impacts the students and their peers in their retention and application of grade-level skills. That's why it is so important to stabilize rents in the region. It will not only keep families and communities whole, it will vastly improve educational outcomes and opportunities for student learning and success. Thank you.
Next speaker is Emma Zaviz, Sally Sefiro, then Shawna Thrower. Don't see Emma. Sally, then Shawna, then Karen Kons.
Hello, I'm Shawna Thrower, and I am here to basically piggyback off of my colleague from ACE regarding the elderly. One of those elderly women is a longtime friend of mine. Our children grew up together, and she is about to leave the state because her rent went up. My rent went up $340. It will be $340 more starting in October. I just sent my daughter to Stanford on Saturday, and I have four sons. I'd like to ask you gentlemen, like, when you were starting out and you had your first apartment, do you remember being able to afford your first apartment? My sons can't do that right now. I don't have any grandchildren, and my sons were raised to be well-intended, well-adjusted young men, and it is very frustrating for them to not be able to have the dignity to even have a place to live so that they can start a family. One of my sons right now is working and living off and on in his car. It's sad. Something has to change. I owned a home. I owned several homes, actually. I was a landlord at one time, and I lived in one of my homes and took the equity from my home to pay my mortgage to fix up my home, which was in a historical landmark area in Del Paso Heights, so that I could stay home and homeschool my children, so that they all went back to school above average. So to the gentleman who called me dumb, who was sitting behind me, I'm not a dumb woman, and my children are not, they don't deserve to not have a chance in this life.
Thrower, your time is complete. Our next speaker is Karen Kons, Anthony Lu, and then Jasmine Collier, then Chad Osborne.
Good evening. My name is Karen Kons, and I'm attorney, an attorney with Legal Services of Northern California, the legal aid agency for Sacramento County. We assist low-income families and individuals with a wide range of civil legal issues, but the number-one issue our clients contact us about is housing. We assist hundreds of tenants facing eviction every year. We are encouraged that Sacramento's leaders recognize the seriousness of displacement in this community and are taking steps to address it. There is no question that those hardest hit by this crisis are Sacramento's low-income families and residents. It is clear the current rate of rent increases is contributing to displacement and that the problem is widespread. In considering solutions to aggressively address this problem, please be mindful that rent increases are particularly harmful to low-income folks. A rent increase to someone who makes $1,000 a month in a social security retirement income, or a family of her four receiving a $950 CalWorks grant, will hit especially hard. Further, no-cause notices that lead to eviction cases are some of the most common experiences for our clients. Many of them live in single-family homes, duplexes, and fourplexes. We recently assisted an elderly woman in her 80s who had lived in her apartment for more than 40 years. She was forced to move and look for rental housing in a market that had no room for her, because she was given a no-cause notice from the apartment complex where she had spent more than half of her life. Many of our clients are single mothers and families with children. We recently assisted a woman who was nine months pregnant and had received a 60-day no-cause notice to move. She asked her landlord for more time, but ultimately had to move out very shortly after giving birth. These stories are common. As you are crafting policy, please keep these folks in mind. Think about the families and individuals for whom a rent increase or no-cause notice is the final step before homelessness.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anthony Lu, then Jasmine Colley, and Chad Osborne.
Hi, my name is Anthony Lu. I'm a homeowner in District 4. I previously rented rooms in my home, and I want to say I'm a proponent of rent control. And my experience is that you can make a fair rate of return by renting based on mortgage rates, based on what a room goes for. I've had not a problem making a fair rate of return, and I support rent control as a property owner. Second of all, I would say that I'm very appreciative of the compromise, the willingness to compromise and incorporate both rent protection for renters now and also building going forward. I think Tristan was saying this earlier, there's no reason we can't do both things. I don't understand why people who are opposed to rent control, because I don't understand why those things are mutually exclusive. We do need to build more affordable housing, absolutely. I'm not an expert on that. I know you guys are, and you'll figure out something, how to do that. I know a little bit more about rent protection, and we absolutely need to do that for people who are clinging now to their current tendencies, or one rent increase away from losing their homes. And we need to do both. I was surprised to see this compromise, or this proposal with both elements in it. I think it's a fabulous idea, and I think you should move in that direction and look, and really do both of those things. Both those things are required. For the member who wanted to have something said about, a potential feedback on this proposal, I would say, I forgot, time's short, that 1999 applicability of the temporary limit seems to be from Costa-Hawkins, which was based on a long-term outlook, and I'm not sure why we would have to replicate that in a short-term temporary limit on rent increases. It's not based on the same thing. It really should apply to more property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Jasmine Colley, Chad Osborne, Jessica Chueiden-Ingersoll, and then Wanda Cleveland. Jasmine here? Don't see Jasmine. Chad Osborne, Jessica, and then Wanda Cleveland. Following Ms. Cleveland is Jeffrey Tardagia, Eric Frame, and then Stevante Clark.
Good evening. Again, rent control is very important. It's important to me and the homeless on the street. I currently get $1,000 a month. Right now, I pay $800 a month for rent. I'm lucky that I have it so cheap, but doesn't, that doesn't solve my problem. I like to move down to the downtown area. I have for many years, but I can't afford it. It would take more than what I have a month just to rent a one-bedroom apartment. And I choose to stay where I'm at until some kind of rent control can happen, so that I can find affordable housing. I've been on every list of, for low income, still gotten nowheres. So also, I had Cynthia stay with me for two weeks. She has now gone to New Mexico to get her apartment, because you guys couldn't offer her anything here. And where she was staying in the grant home, another person that was living there also was allowed to slap her and cause her nose to bleed uncontrollably, and there was no recourse. She failed for her life. So now, that's, I can't even consider going through the, any other programs here until this is fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Wanda.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jeffrey Tardagia, then Eric Frame.
Mayor, my name is Jeff Tardagia. After listening to the legislators spend two years on affordable housing and wondering why nothing was going forward, I've watched this body in dealing with the homeless issue still not use the emergency ordinance dealing with, should we say, homeless. I'm questioning with what you're proposing right now, whether the willpower is here to do what you, Mayor, are aspiring to in this body. It still will not do anything to direct the immediate crisis, which seems to me that, Mayor, you should be proposing to the legislator, hi Eric, about rebates, renters' rebates right now, so that you address the issue in the immediate term, in the next two years, because everything you propose right now is something that will take two years plus to, in a sense, have any effect. In the meantime, like you met somebody here today, he is one rent increase away from being without a home. So these are issues that you'd say you want to resolve, but I will offer you to the unintentional consequences. So I'm really interested to see how your rebate effort that you proposed before, how is it really functioning here in Sacramento? You proposed it for a project. How effective is it? I don't know. Would like to find out. I don't think your measure U is going to go forward, so there again, you're going to be in another situation like everything else.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Frame, then Stevante Clark, Jamar Jefferson.
When I look at the state of California in a big-picture point of view, it seems to me that we have a state that is promoting and pushing genderfication in many cities throughout the state. We've got millions of people that are actually migrating out of the state because it's just not possible to live here anymore, because the cost of living is going up so much. And it's not just rent, it's also food, and basically anything else you can name, everything's going up, and we wonder why that is. And frankly, I think it has to do with a lot of corruption within the state legislature and beyond. As a homeless advocate myself, I've seen a major increase in elderly folk being pushed out in the street. I think that we should all be ashamed of ourselves, that we leave elderly folk on the street to suffer and die, not just you guys, but also we as a people. We need to start stepping up and doing things for ourselves, because frankly, we can't trust the state government to do anything for us. This issue to me is one that's purposely divisive, one that's creating more of the divide and conquer that is putting us in this mess. So I'd like to implore everyone to understand that this state is oppressive to the homeless, it's oppressive to the elderly, to children. It's even oppressive to landlords through fees and ridiculous regulations that make it nearly impossible to provide or want to even build affordable housing. So we're all in this together, and we all need to unite as a people to do the right thing. We have empty buildings, we have empty homes all over the state, and we have the heart to do the right thing, and that's what we need to do as a people. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Is Stevante here, Mr. Clark, then Jamar Jefferson, then James Fago Clark?
Oh, there we go. Good evening, everyone. I first wanted to thank the Creator, y'all, for this time and ask for your favor and understanding. My name is Jamar Jefferson. I'm a father, a co-parent, and a community organizer. The national debt, as you see, is $21,461 billion and counting, a possible crash is at hand. Think about that.
Mr. Jefferson, please speak to the housing issue before us.
Excuse me. Thank you for stopping my time. This is, this has a lot of, this is important. Right. Once again, please don't interrupt me. Okay. I always remember, land and time is equal in value, so every person living and has lived or will live has essentially the same value. We are equal, right? I grew up extremely poor, and I have empathy for those who are suffering. We have to give first priority to housing to people who live now. Hebrews 13:16 says, "Do not neglect to do good and share what you have, for sacrifices are pleasing to the Creator." And Proverbs 19:17 says, "The one who gracious, who is gracious to the poor lends to the Creator, and the Creator will repay him for his good deeds." Safety is the heart of this situation, not housing. The more people that suffer will eventually turn to survival crimes and make communities less safe, and taxpayers will be billed for the increase in larceny and break-ins. I think the mayor asked a great question. What is a fair rate of return? A man in the bathroom who's a property owner is saying 10%. It would be wise for the property owners to come back with the mayor very fast with a reasonable solution, so you can get this situation resolved now, sooner than later. Remember, you can't take profits with you. Money makes life easier for you and your families to enjoy a high quality of life, but helping others is the purpose of life. Building a better society where we look out for each other is the purpose of goals, our goals, not profits. Burden not your hearts with riches, but good deeds. Looking at the temporary success of San Francisco will be short-lived. What happens when they automate? And all non-government jobs are gone. I heard 85% of them will be gone. Can unemployed people pay high, out-of-control costs then? We got to think about that. Thank you.
Mr. Jefferson, and last speaker is James Fago Clark in support.
So, yes, I definitely support the idea of rent control. I'm looking over your packet, and there's some parts I definitely do agree with. I do think that putting a limitation on how much a landlord can rent or raise rent on people is definitely a good thing, though I think that the increased ability should be tied to whatever minimum wage is, considering that rents are skyrocketing, wages are not. People are still paying, getting the same pay, but their rent is skyrocketing. We also live in what's calling themselves the farm-to-fort capital of the world, and food costs are so high, but rent is even higher and continuing to go higher. So far as the waiving of fees to help reduce rents, we tried that just last year. We reduced fees for developments on affordable housing, quote-unquote "affordable," and what did we see as the year progressed? Skyrocketing rents still. It did nothing to stop rents from increasing. In fact, they went up faster, including the ability to add an in-lufy of adding these low-income housing. low-income housings. Most of them are just paying the in-lufy. So obviously, it's not the fees that's the problem. They're still paying out of having to build this low-income housing. Then there's the aspect of the vacant housing and vacant units that are all over the city, not even being used. And these are ones that already exist. And some of them are these nice, really, really, really nice, high-end ones that you guys are keeping lit and get built, you know, that nobody can really afford to rent except for a few people. So I think we really need to look at not only putting limitations on how they can raise the rents. I do like the idea of the 18-month lease because that way they can't raise rent on you for at least 18 months. But it needs to also be tied to what people are making. Because if rent's increasing more than wages, then no matter what you do, even a 5% increase, if wages aren't going up, people are still going to be pressed out of their homes. And right now, I'm seeing retired people that worked their entire lives, living on retirement, forced out onto the streets with no recourse.
Mr. Clark? Our next speaker is Jared Hazel, Kalen Wright.
Is this? Hold on, hold on.
And we are moving to the other side.
Okay, so yes, that... No, no. I just want to note, that was 50 minutes, and we're going to give the other side an hour, which was an hour, an hour. So let's mark the clock here. And again, I would urge those in opposition or for, whatever, it's just the other side of the debate to try to organize yourselves the best you can so we can be efficient here. We sure appreciate that. Okay? Let's go.
Thank you. I have 43 more speaker slips. Jared Hazel, Kalen Wright, Jim Lofgren, Amanda Blackwood, and if you would line up in the center aisle, I'd appreciate it. I don't see Jared. Kalen Wright. Following Kalen is Jim Lofgren, and then Amanda Blackwood.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kalen Wright, representing the Sacramento Association of Realtors. We represent about 6,800 members who work in organized real estate throughout the Sacramento region, as well as Citizens for Affordable Housing. One of the things that didn't come up with the panelists this evening that I think it needs addressing is that the rent control program in San Jose costs more than $4 million a year, and the program in Oakland costs $2.7 million per year. I know there was some discussion of cost, but that exact fact was not brought out. And furthermore, a wide range of economists on both sides of the political spectrum agree that rent control reduces the quality and quantity of available rental housing. Stanford University, as was also discussed, released a study in September of 2017 that found that rent control in San Francisco actually reduced the quantity of available rental housing by about 15% at that would have if the market were left alone. In June of 2000, Paul Krugman wrote that about the adverse side of rent control and found that 93% of economists that he surveyed found that rent control reduced the quality and quantity of rental housing. We all lose when the solutions are focused on these misguided attempts that do nothing to build new housing, which is what we need to focus on as a region. Thank you.
No, no. No, no, no. I'm just going to say, we're not going to have hissing and booing and all that. This has been a very constructive and good conversation. We're going to keep it that way, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Lofgren. I'm the Senior Vice President for the California Apartment Association. Our members own and manage single-family and multifamily rental homes, and I want to thank the Mayor Steinberg and members of the council for holding these two housing workshops. I also want to thank you for the time that you have spent meeting with us. The mayor, you've met with us for many years, and many, it seems like years, on this subject. And we may not agree on the solutions that we've heard tonight or in the past, but at least we're making some progress by focusing on the affordable housing shortage and making it a priority issue. As expert after expert has testified, the solution to our problem is to build more housing ASAP. We've heard many new ideas about funding and speeding up the development of new housing. That's a step in the right direction. The mayor's come up with some ideas. I've heard some new ones tonight. But let's not shoot ourselves in the foot by imposing any form of rent control. What I've heard tonight is that rent control does not solve the housing shortage ever. Yes, rents have increased, but now they are cooling. I'll just point out staff data here. From 2000 to 2014, rents have increased 22% over 14 years. They've gone up a lot in the last couple of years, but that's an average of about 2% per year. I will point out, as some of the advocates have said, wages have not kept pace with the rents. And so maybe what we have is not so much a rent problem as we have a wage problem. Now, annual rent increases at once average 10% now have dropped below 5%. This is data from Yardi Matrix July Report. That decrease came without any form of government regulation, okay? We've heard tonight that government regulation is expensive.
Mr. Lofgren, your time is complete.
Jim, I'm going to allow you to summarize and finish, and I want to ask you one question.
Sure. We've heard tonight that government regulation is expensive. It requires a lot of new employees and fees in many cities that are exceeding $200 per unit per year, adding more pressure on owners to raise rents. Let's be different in the Bay Area. Let's double down on housing. Let's build more housing. Let's get more construction jobs, less regulations, no unrent control.
Let me ask you a quick question here. You've been a good faith participant in a lot of discussions. You're a good guy. You care about the community, as does everybody here, by the way. I don't doubt anybody's motive here. Do you... And you see this situation on the ground here. Do you believe that in this tight rental market that rent gouging exists? And if so, to what degree and extent?
I think that there are owners who raise rents above the average and significantly above the average, and they do so for two reasons. Sometimes they're purchasing a dilapidated rental property, and to the betterment of the community, they renovate it, and in the process, they raise rents. So that cuts both ways.
That's the good motive. What's the other?
But there are, as in any industry, a few bad actors that may raise rents by a high amount, and our industry does not endorse that, and we take steps to mediate, and often we're very successful. But I think that the problem is...
Do you have any tools to enforce your industry's frowning upon owners taking advantage of your tight rental markets and imposing what everyone would... Every reasonable person would agree to is an excessive rent increase. Do you have the tools to do that?
I think that there are existing tools, and in the course of discussions that we've had with you and many council members, we've explored some additional tools that we might need to employ to tweak, but not drastically change our industry to the detriment of investors who need to come to Sacramento and build more housing and solve the problem.
Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Can I ask a question, Jim?
Yeah.
If rents are increasing by 2% on average, and we have a 5% cap, how is the industry hurt?
Because if you're an investor and you have choices to invest throughout the state, throughout the nation, and I talk to them on a daily basis, and I plead with them to come to Sacramento, they say, "Why should I come to Sacramento? You're talking about doing rent control." Temporary is just a short-term phrase for permanent, okay? Anytime there's temporary rent control...
Not in my mind, by the way.
I appreciate that, but the good mayor may not be the good mayor forever. You are a very powerful person, and we want you to be in higher offices, but your predecessor may disagree.
Well, there we go. Now we get to the heart of the hearing here. This is where this was all leading to. Thank you.
I just worry about your predecessor. But I'm just, to be honest with your question...
Yes, sir.
If you put a 5% rent cap, there are investors, there's funders who go, "I'll go elsewhere," okay? And now, in California, you have Proposition 10. And you know, there's a renters' revolt. I understand the concern, but the investors, they have choices throughout the whole country. We need to be competitive. That's what I like about this mayor and members of this council. You are taking good steps to make this city competitive again. You're taking one step forward. Don't go backwards, okay? We can tweak things, improve the situation, give some tenants some more protections, deal with those bad actors, okay? But let's not destroy the possibility of building more affordable housing.
I guess I'm going to have to talk to you offline because I still don't get it.
You pardon me?
I'm going to have to talk to you offline because...
I'm going to have to talk to you offline because I'm still not getting it. If the average rent increase has been 2%,
Yeah.
and the mayor, anyway, is talking about a 5% cap...
Temporarily.
And the people from San Jose say the lenders' performers are based on a 2% annual increase. What this 5% is doing to the industry... I'll talk to you about it offline because I'm just not...
Yeah, we're not going to go back and forth. We want to hear...
Maybe at the next forum, though, we might have some other experts that might be able to answer that question.
That might be a good next step.
Thank you.
Very good.
Amanda Blackwood, then Terry Wagner, then Patrick Wagner.
Blackwood, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. My name's Amanda Blackwood. I am the president and CEO of the Sacramento Metro Chamber of Commerce. First, I want to thank you, city staff, and everyone who is in this room for the time and effort that you have spent on this very real and very complex issue. As we continue to drive meaningful impact to provide affordable housing units and ultimately increase overall housing supply, know that you have a partner in the Metro Chamber to enact real solutions. We all agree Sacramento is experiencing a crisis. We all agree that we must immediately address the shortage of available units, especially if we want to be an inclusive and prosperous economy where all residents have the opportunity for high-wage jobs. The Metro Chamber has engaged our membership from its established developers, financial professionals, owners, renters, and young professionals to address this issue. Following the last housing workshop, we co-authored a proposal which pursues such a strategy to focus on increased supply. The key here is solutions to increased supply. We cannot risk the momentum we have gained during the recent economic renaissance through any type of price restriction. While we sincerely appreciate the testimony of the housing representatives from Oakland and San Jose, and absolutely urge that we look at what other communities have done to tackle this crisis, we strongly caution a thinking that their market conditions are our market conditions, and that the current conditions will remain the same here in the next 24 to 36 months. What we are talking about is a solution that will have impacts over the long run, and we cannot make short-term decisions based on that data. We fully agree that we have to look at the overall economic impact of any decision we make. Again, these choices will have long-lasting impacts, and they cannot be taken lightly or based on any kind of assumption. On behalf of the Metro Chamber and all of its members, we sincerely thank you for your time and look forward to continuing this conversation.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you.
The next speaker is Terry Wagner, then Patrick Wagner, then Raul Chavez.
Hi, my name's Teresa Wagner, and I have studio units in midtown Sacramento. And I think we all agree that for affordable housing, the stock that we have presently, we don't want to do any harm to that stock in whatever you decide to do. My rents are $585 to $785. I have restaurant workers, from waitresses to people that make $5,000 a month. I also have people that are renting their apartments in San Francisco and living here in Sacramento. They're subletting. So the Just Cause situation is another thing that I think they deal with in San Francisco in particular. The lease that you mentioned, if you leave it up to a lease, ours are all month-to-month because young people tend to be mobile. They take other jobs, other cities, and so forth. 13-month lease may cut both ways if somebody gets a job change or they, you know, want to get a bigger place, or for whatever reason, they're locked into that and they would have to buy out of that lease, which to me, you know, if you want to offer it. Our rental agreements right now are 40 pages, and a lot of them are addendums on top of our original rental agreements. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Next speaker is Patrick Wagner, then Raul Chavez, and then Patrick Stalmach.
My name is Patrick Wagner. I'm a small business owner. I've been in business in Sacramento for 33 years. Mayor Steinberg, how do you define free enterprise?
This is a chance for you to make a public comment.
No, no. It's very pertinent to tonight's discussion. I ask you again, what is your definition of free enterprise, sir?
Be happy to acknowledge your question in my closing...
No, 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 sir. No. This is very pertinent to tonight's discussion. I'm down to 1.28, 1.27. Answer, sir, please.
A point of order, mayor?
Yes.
If we could just stop the clock from a point of order, this is not an opportunity to engage with any one council member or the mayor, so the comments have to be directed to everyone without opportunity to return comment.
Oh, okay, then let's do this. Since Mayor Steinberg is not going to answer my question, let me ask any of you up here what your definition of free enterprise is. Can any of you describe for me the definition of free enterprise? One, speak up.
Sir...
Unbelievable!
We respect your right to give us your public comment, but this is not the part of the hearing where we engage back and forth with the public.
It is distinctly important. I am a small businessman, and I am here asking you...
You can sit down as far as I'm concerned.
Does anybody in this room, can anybody relate to what I'm saying? Okay, so people are relating.
You seem a little bit angry. You're welcome to sit down or finish your comments.
No, I've got 54 seconds, and I'm waiting for one of you to tell me your definition of free enterprise.
Mr. Wagner, per the Brown Act, they cannot answer your question. This is a one-way dialogue.
Oh, then let's do this. Let's define what is limited constitutional government? Any of you? What is fiscal responsibility?
He's got 30 seconds. Let him finish.
Yeah. For the record, for the people of Sacramento, I have asked a simple question that is totally pertinent to this discussion tonight called "free enterprise," and I cannot get an answer from any of you. Shame on you. You are defined as demagogues. Big guy?
Wish you a lovely evening. Thank you. Next.
Our next speaker is Raul Chavez, Patrick Stalmach, and then Donna Lewis.
Good evening. My name is Raul Chavez. I'm a small business owner here in Sacramento. I own multiple rental properties. And one of the things, when I think of rent control and obviously some of the things that are being said tonight, is that just in my current eviction that I've got going on right now, I have a tenant that did not pay since March, and I'm still going through the eviction process. I still have not been able to get her out. So one of the key things that I, you know, with rent control is that you're now enticing professional tenants. That basically cost us quite a bit of money, just with the amount of rent loss that we've had, plus the repairs that we've had to do, even though she's not paying rent, on top of the eviction costs, filing for petition to dismiss bankruptcies and such. It's over $22,000 just on one property alone. So by giving them, you know, some of these extra rights or notices and such things like that, what's going to happen is actually prolonging the process even longer, which then it doesn't allow us to obviously make a fair return on our properties. So, you know, with some of these things that are being said, one of the things that it could cost for a small business owner like myself is to take the properties that I do have in the city of Sacramento, sell them, and move the money elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming.
Next speaker is Patrick Stalmach, then Donna Lewis, then Dana Stewart. I don't see Patrick. Donna Lewis. Following Donna is Dana Stewart.
Good evening. Hello, Mayor Steinberg and council. Nice seeing you guys again. My name is Donna Lewis, and I live here in Sacramento. I've been in the rental business for over 14 years, and I own and manage my own rental properties. I agree, we have a serious problem of supply of affordable housing, and I might agree that rent control might be such a not-bad thing if the proposed ordinance was actually balanced and fair, but it's not. I'm trying to do my very small part to contribute to supply of affordable housing. I've saved, and over a number of years have acquired several small properties. I am a mom-and-pop shop, a single-family home, several duplexes. I consider them affordable housing. I try to keep the rents low. I've had tenants that have been with me for over 10 years, and their rents have been very low. I take pride of my tenants. But I still need to pay my mortgage, utilities, and make improvement, and make sure the rental units are safe. If rent control passes, I'll have to consider selling or investing outside of the city, which I hate to do. But I bet I'm not the only owner that thinks this way. Some of them are already selling. So in my world with rent control, the supply of affordable housing will decline. I would suffer, my tenants would suffer, and owners that provide affordable housing at this point would suffer. I do agree on the 18-month program because I have tenants that sign leases for over a year, two years, and I haven't changed their rent. They've been with me five years, six years, and I've kept it low, very low, to a low that some of them are paying $995 for a two-bedroom, one-bath, which is going in my neighborhood for $1,600. And I still haven't raised their rent because they've been taking care of my place, and I respect that. been taking care of my place, and I respect that. And my respect of that, I keep it low. So I hope that rent control, if it does pass, is looking at everybody's side, tenants that are having a hard time, and people and owners that are having a hard time. We live in this world together. Let's work together and come up the plan that works with everybody. Thank you very much for listening. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dana Stewart. Is Dana Stewart here? Bob Ward, then Tim Murphy, and then Ron Brown. I don't see, is Bob Ward, then Tim Murphy, and then Ron Brown.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Bob Ward. I'm the business manager of IBW Local 340. I'm here today to express our concerns of the concept of adopting any form of rent control in Sacramento. We believe this is a step in the wrong direction. We will be the first to acknowledge that our region has an affordability crisis, or a housing affordability crisis. Our conversations with both local and national developers have indicated that we will, they will simply look elsewhere if we enact this type of policy in our city. Rent control will not guarantee a single new unit of affordable housing, but it will guarantee that we reduce the opportunities for a skilled and trained workforce to create more affordable housing in our community and reduce overall construction activity in the city. We're all trying to find a solution to address affordability crisis, the affordability crisis, but rent control is not the right, the right approach for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tim Murphy, then Ron Brown.
Mayor, council members, good evening. I have this up here, not because I thought the meeting was going to get a little bit off the rails tonight, but just to symbolize that the real solution for this problem, it's to build our way out of it. I represent the Sacramento Regional Builders Exchange. We've been around since 1901. We have over 1,000 members, and our members stand ready to build us out of this problem. I'd like to express my appreciation to Vice Mayor Hanson, Councilmember Gera, and Councilmember Jennings for putting their proposal forward. I think it's some interesting proposals, and I think it's the foundation to begin some conversations. But what I'm really interested in are your, your ideas for long-term relief. Several weeks ago, SRBX along with a few other business partners, we submitted a 10-point plan that looked to address some of the housing objectives that we would like to see put into place, things that we think that can speed up construction. We believe that the city needs to have, first and foremost, set housing goals, not just for multifamily housing and rental units, but also for single-family housing. We need to be sure that we are building sufficient housing that addresses all aspects of our city's population in order to build our way out of this problem and to address what really is a problem of economics. If we can increase the supply, we will have lower demand, which will lower prices, which will get us out of the situation. So with that, I won't belabor any of the points that others have made about how rent control does not build a single new home, but would pledge to you that SRBX stands ready to help you address the problems and the solutions that can build more supply in our community. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ron Brown, then Doug Coville, then Louis Sumter.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. It's a pleasure to be here. I stand here before you to oppose rent control as it was originally proposed. I am encouraged to see a couple new samples of rent control. I'm Ron Brown, president and CEO of Brown Construction. We build market-rate apartments and also affordable housing throughout the state and affordable housing throughout the western states. We do have a lot of knowledge on this and a lot of experience. My main point tonight is through my discussions with our clients and their REITs and their funders, they are prepared and are ready to pull out of Sacramento. Sacramento is just getting going. We've currently got two projects under construction here in Sacramento that are very viable projects, and we have four more in the works. My fear is that they are going to pull out, and those projects collectively probably will employ, you know, generously 2,000 people. So it is a bigger concern. I am for affordable housing. It is a staple of my company. We do a lot of work with the nonprofits in affordable housing, and I would look maybe to see these proposals lean more onto the affordable housing nonprofits that already exist.
Mr. Brown, let me just, one quick question if I might just of clarity. As you talk to the REITs and the other investors, and they're very important to our future of our community because it takes capital and investment, no question. Does their point of view change if, would it change if you were to say to them that any proposal brought forward would completely exempt not only new construction, but construction that had been built over the last 20 years?
Yes.
It would change?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's, that's interesting information here tonight.
Well, that's what was encouraging with this, although like many others have said, there is a concern when we talk temporary. I think the time should personally be spent to make something more permanent, but, you know.
There's a, I mean, temporary on the regulation side would be a positive, if you will. But you're saying it would make a difference if it were older units and you completely exempted new construction?
I think it would make a big difference. I can't speak for the units, the individuals that own the current units.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Next speaker is Doug Coville, then Louis Sumter, then Ryan Wagner.
Good evening, mayor, city council. I'm Doug Coville. I'm a Realtor with Coville Banker Residential Brokerage. And I think I speak for 99.99% of the people in the room that we do really appreciate what you're trying to do here. I do believe that it involves a multifaceted approach to solving Sacramento's affordable housing problem. It must include solutions that will trigger the new building of affordable housing units without rent control, which will only make the problem worse. And some of you, some people have you believed that all property owners, rental property owners are big, strong, profitable corporations, but that's not always the case. Many of my clients over the past 30-some years are in their 50s, 60s, 70s, and 80s. A lot of them are small business people. They didn't have a big retirement account. They just bought a rental property and had the chance they possibly could. Many of those with negative cash flows for years, with the idea of down the road, they'd get that mortgage paid off, and they'd have a retirement at the end. Unfortunately, though, if you enact rent control, you're not going to solve the problem, and you're going to jeopardize these people's retirements. So I think Sacramento's got a great opportunity here to be a model for other cities like we possibly had here tonight. But with, if you enact rent control, we're just going to be viewed as another city that couldn't solve the problem. They just made it worse. I do want to applaud the council member's idea. It sounds interesting. I look forward to studying it. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Louis Sumter, then Ryan Wagner, then Chrisanne Giles, then Cynthia Ray.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, city council. It's great to see you. My name is Louis Sumter, and I am a city resident. I'm a small business owner, a sole proprietor Realtor with Better Homes and Gardens Real Estate, and I am a rental property owner. All of my rental properties are historic, which adds another level of cost to maintaining them, especially maintaining them properly as though they should be. And as a sole proprietor, one day I will be responsible for all of my retirement funds, all of my retirement benefits, all of my retirement income. When I plan for retirement, it's by a very calculated process, and the rental income properties play a big part in that because when I do retire, my rental income properties will pretty much be the sole source of income that I have. So I ask that you consider any alternative ideas where you can bring collaborative efforts together, where you can bring renters together, you can bring property owners together. Unlike many property owners, I actually live in one of my apartments, and I love living that way. It's a great, great way to, to be. So I ask you to consider alternative ideas. And I also would like to respond to Councilmember Carr's question earlier about the percentages. And an example that I can share with you is there's a dilapidated fourplex in my neighborhood, and the, each unit had been rented a very long time at a very low cost. And the property owner finally decided to sell a number of properties in Sacramento. And when this property closed escrow, it closed at almost $900,000. So that skews that 2% because when they put all the improvements into bringing that property up to code, brick foundation, peeling paint, thousands of dollars of dry rot, when that all happened, then they had to bring their, their rents to market rate, and so it won't be 2%.
Mr. Sumter, your time is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sumter.
Our next speaker is Ryan Wagner, Chrisanne Giles, Cynthia Ray.
My name's Ryan Wagner. I'm a real estate broker here in Sacramento. This is a very important topic, so I'd appreciate it if all of you pay attention. Everyone.
Address us for listening. We're sitting here all night. We're listening to everyone.
Okay. Thank you.
Need a lecture. Go ahead.
All right. I, along with everybody else here, strongly oppose just cause and any form of rent control. We do not trust you to make any kind of informed decisions about a topic that you do not understand. But more importantly, we do not trust you, Steinberg. Thank you.
Next speaker is Chrisanne Giles, Cynthia Ray, Denise Ross Frankholm.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, council members. My name is Chrisanne Giles. I'm the executive director of Policy and Initiatives for the North State Building Industry Association. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this, this evening. I really liked the work that was put into the proposals that were shared tonight. I wish I had had more time to review the details in both of them, although Mayor Steinberg and myself had gone through some of the items in his work. I would like to do a deeper dive on the work done by Vice Mayor Hanson, Gera, and Jennings. We'd like you to consider possibly, or my question would be, is there a three-year sunset that's associated with this as well as what the mayor has proposed, and to ask if it also follows Costa-Hawkins as far as direct questions. And then I'd like to talk a little bit about development in Sacramento. When I meet with my builders and lenders and we're talking about this issue, the reason that they're so worried about having a cap is because it sends a different signal to the market. And unlike Oakland and San Jose, you don't get private investment and foreign investment in Sacramento the way you do in other parts of the regional Bay Area. And so it's a different market here. The cost of capital is more. And so when you limit what someone's able to do with that capital, it has an impact. It has a cooling effect. And we're also concerned that we're already seeing a cooling in the market. And so to add it at this time, at the very height of the housing market, not only will drive away new development opportunities, but could limit capital for other investment in the city of Sacramento. And we need to continue to encourage that investment. Rent caps only lower rents for very few. It's a false promise of lower rents, and it only works if that person never moves. That's why 93% of economists do not recommend rent caps in order to lower rental costs. I think an economic study would be a wise point moving forward on both of these so that, like Councilmember Carr said, we could evaluate in detail the impacts of the proposals before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. The next speaker is Cynthia Ray, Denise Ross Frankholm, and then Paul H. Grison.
Hi, good evening, council member and mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Cynthia Ray. I am the senior director of acquisitions working exclusively at FPI Management since 1990. FPI is the largest affordable and conventional apartment management company in California. We manage 75,000 apartments, and we have 6,072 units in the city of Sacramento and many under development. The current housing crisis is like a game of musical chairs. There are five chairs and eight people playing. No matter what we do to the chairs, we paint them, we regulate them, there are still only five chairs and three people without them. We need more chairs, like we need more housing in the city of Sacramento. Per the 2017 annual housing element, Sacramento needs 24,101 units by 2021. Rent control will not create one unit of housing and will have a devastating impact on the city's growth. In the last 10 years, I've seen cost of managing apartment communities increase by 35 to 55%. Development costs have increased by 30%. With the additional costs related to land and construction, many projects simply will not pencil if subjected to extreme or permanent rent control. As a company, we certainly recognize the affordability challenges that Sacramentoans face. Our company and partners want to continue to invest and do business in the city. We need to focus on policies that help new housing units be built and reduce the barriers to development. We need to reduce regulations, entitlement costs, and fees. We need to create new funding sources with private and public partnerships, approve housing bonds, and better plan for the city's future. We need long-term solutions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Councilmember Chenier has a quick question.
Just real quick, so you have 6,200 units in the?
I'm sorry, say it again.
How many units did you have in the city?
In the city of Sacramento, as of today, I counted 6,072 units.
Do you know what your average rent increase has been over the last 12 months?
Uh, I don't, but it's easy to find. We have that kind of analytics.
I'd love to get that.
Yeah, I'll send that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Denise Ross Frankholm, then Paul H. Grison, and then Chip O'Neil, and then Adam Must, Mufflett.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor and council. My name is Denise Ross Frankholm. I work as a manager for Berkshire Hathaway Home Services, and I'm a Realtor. I want to start by thanking all of you for spending the evening with us discussing this very important topic. And say, as a council, I feel you really need to oppose any proposal that would discourage the development of new construction. I'm encouraged by the vice mayor and his associates' proposal. That, that certainly seems to be getting closer to something that would work. As far as the, the mayor's proposal, my concern is that we've all seen, you know, no offense to you personally, mayor, but we've all seen what happens with temporary laws. Someone along the way tends to make them permanent. So please do not enact something that you know will damage our beautiful city and set back the amazing growth and development that we have been experiencing so far. Sacramento needs long-term solutions that support the city's economic development and incentivizes the building of more affordable housing while protecting the tenants. I really liked the part about at least exempting the mom-and-pops because I've talked to a lot of mom-and-pop landlords, and what they're saying is their concern is that they would just have to sell their properties in the city of Sacramento if this passed because with rising costs, it wouldn't make sense anymore. I also have the opportunity to have a lot of discussions with commercial real estate agents, particularly ones lately who work with developers of multifamily housing. And I'm getting two messages. One, they're putting their Sacramento projects on hold, or two, those agents are being instructed by their clients, "Don't even show me properties in the city limits right now until this is resolved." So please, let's not hurt our chance at all this great development. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
Next speaker is Paul H. Grison, Chip O'Neil, then Adam Mustfelt. Don't see Paul. Chip here, is Chip here?
Chip was here. I don't see.
Adam Mustfelt.
Adam?
And following Adam is Franco Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. My name's Adam Mustfelt, and I'm a resident of Sacramento in District 5. I am a member of the California Apartment Association and represent a landlord that owns apartment communities in the area. While I understand we're facing a housing affordability crisis, rent control in any form is not the answer. While there are many arguments against rent control, adding just cause for evictions is especially perilous as it restricts the ability for managers to evict problem residents. Landlords are not in the business of unfairly evicting residents for at least a couple reasons. One, it typically costs thousands of dollars to re-rent a vacant apartment. And two, there are tenant protections currently in place that prohibit unfair evictions. I respectfully implore the city council to continue seeking other alternatives that would benefit the community long-term and create affordable housing through incentivizing development by removing barriers. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Franco Garcia, then Adrian Finney.
Staff Council Mayor, Franco Garcia-Garcia Realty. I'm a homeowner and a landlord in District 4. I'm going to talk about, my comments will be on page 6 and 7 of the framework here, that, that the package. There are only a few lawful ways to occupy a housing: renting, buying, inheriting, or winning the publisher's clearinghouse sweepstakes. So for 99.9% of us, there's only one, there's only two ways, renting or buying. When you buy a house, the debt-to-income ratio that lenders qualify you is up to 43%. So when you factor out the credit cards and the car payments, most buyers buy in the range of a 35% to 40% debt-to-income ratio. So what I'm asking is that when we look at these two So what I'm asking is that when we look at these two columns, that the column of the 30 to 49.9% should be altered, and a single column of 43% and above should give us a better idea of the number of people who are currently rent burdened. Thank you.
Thank you, Franco.
Next speaker is Adriana Finney, then Charlene Singley.
Hello, my name is Adriana Finney. We own 15 single-family rentals in the city of Sacramento. This was supposed to be our retirement, but now we're starting to sell the houses because we're afraid of the negative financial consequences of rent control and just cause eviction. As landlords, we never evict a tenant unless absolutely necessary. All it does is cost us money. There's no point to it. With just cause eviction, a tenant could tie us up in court for months, not pay any rent, and cost us thousands in legal fees. Rent control is not going to increase affordable housing in any way. As a matter of fact, it will make the problem worse. There will be less affordable housing, because people like us are starting to divest ourselves of rentals in Sacramento. We are not the only ones looking at this option. If you look at the number of houses for sale, that number is rising. Please do not pass rent control or just cause. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Charlene Singley, and then Kelly Swain.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Charlene Singley. I'm a Realtor with Dunagan Realtors Lampark and a resident of District 4. There have been many impassioned pleas tonight, and while I empathize with them, rent control is not the answer. The only answer is the construction of additional affordable housing, and lots of it, because we are so woefully far behind. It is a simple question of supply and demand, and rent control, as has been said before, will not add even one additional affordable unit. It is a very short-sighted, short-term answer to a very real problem that will only be exacerbated if implemented. As we heard earlier, there is already anecdotal evidence of developers and investors putting plans on hold due to the looming possibility of rent control, the impact of which would be devastating on the already tight housing supply. City leaders' top priority should be to pursue solutions that increase housing supplies without rent control to ensure the quality of overall housing and that property values do not decrease, taking away funds from programs like those to help the homeless. I fear that one of the unintended consequences of rent control will actually be an increase in the number of homeless due to the ensuing decrease of new affordable housing units coming online, which is the exact opposite of what we all want in this room tonight. Rent control does not protect tenants; in the long run, it hurts them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next Kelly Swain. Kelly Swain, Rich Ameeker, and then Paula Swain.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for having us, and thank you for your time. My name's Kelly Swain. I'm a homeowner and Realtor, and I live and work in District 4 here in Sacramento. I'm also a single mother of very soon-to-be two. And so my concern is, not just as a businessperson or a homeowner, but also as a mother, that I want a long-term solution so that my children have the opportunity to either rent or live in Sacramento. Yes, we have a crisis now, but rent control will not help that crisis. It will hurt it. We have to ask ourselves with the timing of this conversation, and Costa-Hawkins on the ballot in November, and as we all know in Sacramento, temporary measures turning into permanent measures is a possibility. What will rent control look like, and how will it affect us in Sacramento? You've heard from all of my constituents, rent control will not help. It will eliminate investor owners, which means less units. It will eliminate companies coming in to build. It will hurt our housing stock, and it will hurt our affordability issue. So please consider no rent control and no just cause for eviction. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Rich Ameeker. Rich Ameeker, I don't see Rich. Paula Swain. Following Ms. Swain is Herb Cross, and then Linda Wood.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Paula Swain. I'm with my husband, owners of Dunagan Realtors, and soon-to-be grandma. So there you go.
Hey, congratulations. That's great.
I have been proactive, forgive me, I'm going to read this, because I get terribly nervous. I've been proactive in contacting many of my clients who have purchased duplexes or single-family homes as an investment in their future retirement. These people aren't rich landowners with hundreds of rentals. They are mom-and-pop owners who will be living on a fixed income. They saved to purchase a few properties that they could rely on for future income. I've shared with them the recent rent control proposal. Their reactions are hurt and fear. They have had longtime tenants who they like and want to keep, so they have not raised their rents for years. These properties are their retirement, and they can't understand why the city is ready to diminish their income substantially. I was recently asked to sign a petition for rent control. I laughed and said, "I'm a Realtor, you may not want to talk to me." His answer was, "I would thank you before this, since all the landlords will be selling their properties." While the inference is insulting, the point was made clear. The solution is not to take or limit their retirement. The solution is to make investment property enticing to build and maintain, give builder incentives to create more affordable housing, along with an increase in rentals, will become a competitive market that will, by its very nature, keep rent at a reasonable rate. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Herb Cross. Next speaker is Herb Cross, Linda Wood, then Michelle Quarantana.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Herb Cross. I am Director of Property Management for Lion Real Estate and Chair of the California Apartment Association Sacramento Advisory Board. I'm not going to read what I've written this evening, because it's just simply redundant. But I will say that I have, as a Realtor, lived through three recessions, three downturns, economic downturns, each of which included a housing crisis. Each of those crises have been met by short-term solutions, which in turn, in many cases, have created long-term negative consequences. I believe rent control is one of those solutions. I was impressed with the San Francisco study, and one element of that study indicated that a solution, when you have a relationship, tenant landlord relationship, the solution that burdens one party over the other with financial burden can't work. Sort of reminds me of that country song, "You're the reason our kids are so ugly." You can't just blame one party in a relationship for what's wrong. We've got to look for a solution that is long-term and involves all parties. Thank you.
Next speaker is Linda Wood, Michelle Quarantana, then Mallory Spilker.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. Thank you all so much for your time here tonight, and for all the effort that you're putting into coming up with the solution to this problem. I want to say that one of the things Jim said, I think that maybe, I've always said the problem here is the lack of affordable housing. Maybe it's also a jobs issue, because it seems like I'm really hearing a lot about that. I think that, I really and truly, and I'm not sure if I said this, but my name is Linda Wood, and I am the current 2018 President of the Sacramento Association of Realtors, representing about 67, 6800 people. I live in the city, I'm in District 6, proud to say that. I do want to say that I really strongly believe that imposing unfair rent control regulations will decline, will lead to a decline in the overall quality of housing in our city. I am going to use my own father, he's 92 years old, he's in assisted living. His only income, retirement income, is the housing that he worked very hard on from way before I was born, was having very affordable, low-income rentals. He spent all of his free Saturdays and working on those units, keeping them in repair. At this point, his cost's going up much higher than the income, and every time somebody leaves, it costs a lot of money to refurbish those buildings, and I can't even imagine having to pay rental relocation costs to those people when that, if that happens. He would certainly be out of business. I think that the implementing innovative ideas, creating the significant funding for more housing is integral to this, and I just thank you all for going along and looking at that. Rent control impacts everyone, whether you're owning or renting. If that person next to you is a problem tenant, the landlord, if they have to deal with just cause and crowning rent control issue, that's going to impact all of us if they can't get rid of that person. So I think the problem is real, we have an extreme shortage of affordable housing. The answer is doing whatever we can to get more homes built. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michelle Quaranta, Mallory Spilker, and Josh Wood. I don't see Michelle, Mallory Spilker, then Josh Wood, then Brian Nelson.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for bringing this important topic before Council today. My name is Mallory Spilker. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the California Apartment Association. Obviously, as you've heard time and time again, we are dealing with a serious housing crisis here in Sacramento, and need to find real housing solutions that will help those who need it the most. Unfortunately, rent control or rent stabilization or anti-gouging policies are not the solution. While well-intentioned, rent control creates a system of winners and losers by reducing access to available rental housing for our most vulnerable residents. Those who are best positioned to navigate the system and actually find rent-controlled apartments tend to be the most affluent renters, with knowledge of the market and time to look for the best deals. In this scenario, renters who need the most help would lose out and have to leave the city to find affordable housing. Numerous studies show that rent control laws tend to drive low-income residents away from an area by making rental properties unaffordable and unattainable, hurting the population it was intended to help. We encourage Council to look at alternative solutions today without the negative implications that many people spoke about, including negative implications put forth by any sort of rent cap and just cause evictions. Thank you.
For coming tonight.
Next speaker is Josh Wood.
Wood.
Great, so I'll just use the remainder of the hour?
You got it.
Josh Wood with Region Business. Appreciate that. We have to ask ourselves, what are we trying to achieve? It's clear that people are hurting, and we need to have a solution for the housing crisis. I think from your first workshop, it was really clear that we need to figure out a solution on supply. There were a lot of discussions that came up during that workshop, and I think some clear paths that we can take forward in order to achieve that result. We also agree, we need short-term solutions, and that means tenant protections. Several were floated today, some good ideas. But at the end of the day, if the short-term solution destroys our ability to resolve the long-term problem, then it's only unacceptable. That unacceptable policy is rent control. Economists all agree. I mean, we've talked about this, everyone said it tonight. There's a Stanford study that talks about rent controls reducing supply and raising rents. There's a MIT study talking about housing values going down by 10%. Is that something that we want? And also, frankly, what reduces tax revenue? We don't want to be stymying investment, right? This is the time that we need to actually do the exact opposite, which is to encourage investment. The other thing I would point out, as a group that does regional policy throughout this region, this is the only city that's considering a rent control proposal in this region, and do we really want to create an island effect that puts Sacramento, separates Sacramento in that way from the other cities? Yes, we can lead, I think, in passing tenant protections. I think a lot of other cities in this region would follow, but rent control is a step too far. If it works so good in the Bay Area, then why are so many of those people coming here? Those studies have proven it. So let's solve the problem, but let's not make it worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have 10 more speakers, and we have less than 10 minutes. Next speaker is Brian Nelson, Tommy Christie, then Steve Finney.
You may want to go a minute apiece now, so that we can hear everybody. It's 10 minutes, it's an hour, and it will cut off at an hour, so doing it randomly.
My name is Brian Nelson, and I am a resident of the city of Sacramento, District 4. I own and manage rental units in the city. Professionally, I've worked as a commercial real estate broker in the city and county of Sacramento for over 28 years. I specialize in multifamily commercial properties, so I represent clients that buy and sell apartments. I have firsthand knowledge of the issue on both a personal and professional level. We study the market as presented here. We have the market survey and supply and demand survey. Just want to mention that when we market properties, when the initiative, the rent control initiative was a possibility, people, investors were very fearful of buying in the city limits, and we would highlight in our marketing materials that if a property was not in the city limits, that was noteworthy. And we have investors that are quite concerned about buying property in the city limits if rent control is even a possibility. We know that affordability, the affordability problems are a direct result of the lack of supply, and by increasing supply, we'll see those problems abate. It's evidenced by studying the market fundamentals, which I do on a normal course of my profession. And as we observed in the presentation from Mr. Jasso, supply is increasing currently, significantly as of late. What's not presented, what's not presented by Mr. Jasso, is that rent growth currently is also decreasing. It has dropped, at last count, to 3.8% as of second quarter of this year, year-over-year. So we're now at 3.8% rent growth, which is a positive. That's an indication, a reflection of the increase in supply. And what's noteworthy is rents also dropped in the early years of the Great Recession. And to the point about the 18-month lease?
I'm misobserved.
Okay, all right, well...
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Your time is complete.
Mayor, could I just say something real quick?
Yes, sir.
Brian, Brian Wright? I just want to say thank you. I think you distributed that to our offices?
Yes.
With a letter, I read it in the report, and I actually gave it to one of the people in the audience, because I thought it was helpful, understanding our market conditions.
Right.
Assuming that those projects get built, you know, there's a lot in the pipeline, but I did like the data about how short we are in various categories. And it's something that, at our last housing workshop, I asked our Assistant City Manager, who's talking to somebody else right now, to look at doing for us, to really use market data to show what segments of apartments we need to create, or housing, excuse me, to meet that demand, the population demand, the job creation demand, and to figure out where a balanced market comes in. Mr. Hasso, I was just talking about you and the request I made at the last meeting, to create data like the stuff in this Colliers Report, so I'd love you to give that to him, to show him what...
Absolutely. I just also might like to make sure everybody's aware that Township 9 in the River District is available, and that's shovel, it's shovel-ready for over 2,000 units.
Depending on how this goes, some people might want to buy a bridge across the river.
Our next speaker is Tommy Christie, Steve Finney, then Chris Little.
My name is Tommy Christie. I want to thank the committee here for your time spent. My company's called ILoveRentals.com. It's really simple. I have deep emotional love for houses. Been a longtime owner here for 15 years, investments. Priority is our, we do rehabilitations of homes, stabilize them, get new tenants in there, and we keep them. By the end of the year, I'll hold less than 10 houses here in Sacramento County, but we hold rentals in 10 or 12 counties here in California. I do hold rental, you know, more rentals than most of the mom-and-pops, but I very much do represent the mom-and-pops. My main point here will be that I don't want you guys to stifle the move-up market inside of what's happening in development for those families that do need a four-bedroom home, and they choose to keep their three-bedroom, two-bath home. They may choose not to re-rent it based on the fact that we're going to have permanent tenancy or other issues that may go along with rent control. I'm not, I have no issue with rent bumps. I actually have no, I don't really move my tenants at all. A lot of them stay put for five, 10-plus years. And what I've found, to speak to Mr. Carr's point also, is that I think that the opportunity to reduce fees and the issues that go along with over-managing our rentals, for those of us that aren't bumping rents, it's an easily auditable, you know, opportunity. We have an opportunity here to say that we're not raising rents, we can prove it with the insight of our leases, and as long as we don't eat more taxes associated with that, we just don't want to see the lease be more important than the deed.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Steve Finney, Chris Little, then Rosanna Garcia.
Hi, my name's Steve Finney. I'm a rental owner in the Sacramento area here. I'm a native, born Northern Californian. In 2011, we scraped together every dime we had for retirement, when we sold one single-family rental we had in San Francisco to take a chance on Sacramento. As you know, 2011 in Sacramento, this place was in the tank. It was a big gamble. We found boarded-up cracked houses, squatters stealing pipe, wire, and anything that wasn't nailed down, burning hardwood floors in these houses for heat. That somehow rent control will give affordable housing to the average Joe six-pack, it will not. Just the opposite will occur, and another kind of housing crisis will happen here. Look at the streets of San Francisco. Rent control has solved nothing. It's worse than ever. We will and can leave if rent control comes to Sacramento, but the poor guy working at Safeway or Home Depot cannot leave, and he will not find a cute, fixed-up, clean, well- Safeway or Home Depot cannot leave and he will not find a cute, fixed-up, clean, well-maintained home. Supply and demand is the problem. We need to build more affordable housing. Rent control will worsen the situation and it won't help landlords. It'll leave less rentals available. I want you all to think of the law of unintended consequences here. And I don't think you've gone into that too much. You've thought of a lot of solutions. And I really appreciate this council's attempt at solving this really pernicious, difficult problem because I know how many people are hurting on the streets out here. We need to help those folks, but I don't think rent control is the way of doing it. Is the crisis great enough to call FEMA? To provide portable housing perhaps, considering the recent fires? It's a thought. Perhaps portable housing. They did thousands of those after the hurricane in New Orleans. Maybe that's a solution.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Chris Little, then Rosanna Garcia, then Elsie Brown, then Jamison Parker.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. My name's Chris Little. I am a resident of District 3. I'm a Realtor, real estate broker, and also a property manager. And most of mine are the mom-and-pops that I work with. I thank you for your attention to our city and region's housing affordability crisis. There have been some really interesting ideas that have gone around the horn tonight. In my view, rent control should not be considered as part of any viable solutions. I strongly oppose any form of rent control as it does not address the cause, the true cause of affordable housing, and that's new units. Sacramento needs to take steps to increase housing supplies by reducing the barriers to building affordable housing for all income levels such as the owner's fees and address issues associated with the availability of land zoning and entitlements. While I appreciate the difficulty of some who indicate their rents are increasing quickly, it's not been my experience with the properties that I manage. I manage approximately 100 units in the city around Sacramento for others, and most of the property owners are 65 or older and rely on the income, as you've heard from others around here, rely on the income from their one or two or three to supplement their retirements if not maintain their complete retirement. Most do not raise rents on an annual basis, if at all. In fact, many reward their tenants by not raising their rents. So please keep these people in mind too when we discuss rental.
Thank you. We're at the hour, but you're welcome.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to take one more speaker, Rosanna Garcia, and then we're going to do what we said we would do at the beginning. And there are a few, there are some additional speakers. This won't be the last time we tackle this topic and we'll make sure that we put you at the top of the list the next time, okay? Ms. Garcia, the last speaker.
Thank you so much. Last but not least, good evening and thank you for hanging out this long with us. We appreciate it. I want to speak to the fact that the majority of landlords are not big investment companies. They are in fact like us. My name's Rosanna Garcia, Garcia Realty. We've been in real estate here investing for 55 years and we represent over 200 landlords in Sacramento. I live in District 4 proudly. And I just want to say that the majority of landlords have worked very hard all their lives to acquire the properties they own. They count on these investments to supplement their incomes, or for many, it is their only source of income or retirement. And who in this room would like any of their retirement or personal income taken from them because a portion of the population says so? I don't think anyone would be in agreement to that. The landlords we represent are hard-working citizens that already have limited rights. This state and country were built on the principles of a free market. That is why everyone wants to live here. Why should we punish those that have had the good fortune of being able to work hard, invest in their communities, and are providing affordable housing to our residents? Not all landlords are the bad guys. Sure, there are a few bad apples, but the majority are just trying to provide clean, safe, affordable housing. And with all their costs continuing to go up, after all is said and done, hopefully they make some money. Rent control will force us all to go backwards and not forwards. And I just wanted to touch on the tenant protection. I just wanted to say that there needs to be definite clarification. Mediation if faced with rent increase greater than 6%. At that point, we're covering the cost of our utilities, the 18-month lease. I mean, some landlords would be in agreement to that, but many would have issues with that too. And the fair noticing, right now 60 days is basically what we give our tenants. So would that mean 90 days or more? So there needs to be clarification on that too. And the long-term relief, of course, we're all in agreement.
I'm incomplete.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. But I would like to thank you both sides, all sides I should say, for expressing yourselves and very, very important that we hear you and take it in. I want to thank my colleagues for their attentiveness. I want to turn it back to the City Council now and seek some guidance, advice, direction if you want. If not, we will have other opportunities, including the next housing workshop in several weeks. So we don't have to go long here tonight if you don't want to. Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. One of the perspectives we didn't get to hear is affordable housing development. And I saw Arti Zahadani in the back. And Arti, I don't know if you mind me asking you a question. I know you were going to try to speak and I was going to ask it to you then, but Mayor, if you don't mind.
Fine.
Arti, I know that St. Anton has done a lot of affordable housing construction, a lot of multifamily housing construction. And I asked this of the City of San Jose and the City of Oakland, but how would implementing rent control here affect multifamily construction? And are the things that we're recommending along the affordable lines going to be helpful or not? I guess there are two questions for you.
I appreciate that question, Vice Mayor. Arti Zahadani with St. Anton, we're one of the state's most active builders of market rate, mixed-income, and affordable housing. And we're about five blocks from here, but we build all throughout the Bay Area. We're one of the biggest developers in the Bay Area, Silicon Valley, and then in Sacramento as well. But your answer is a great question. I think that the most alarming, concerning issue with the rent control discussion is the impact on mixed-income housing, the concept of an 80/20, as we refer to it, 80% market rate, 20% affordable. By having that dissemination of affordability, you're able to access tax credit financing, tax-exempt bonds, so you get favorable terms. However, you rely on the 80% that's market rate to basically subsidize the affordable units. If we put a cap on your ability to subsidize the affordables, that's going to hurt that type of product. You're seeing very, very few of that units delivered in the City of Sacramento. The second question on affordable.
Before you go to that, the mayor had asked a question about 20 years. And I know that the financing on particularly mixed income and affordable is fairly Byzantine. Like if you look at the capital stack and yada, 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 things that go over my head. Is there an appropriate length of time on projects like you're working on?
Yeah, absolutely.
That would give the market some security at that point or allow for projects to be refinanced?
Yeah, I think you heard a very black-and-white answer from the city representatives from Oakland and San Jose. Remember, they're getting, we have a number of units in those jurisdictions, but they're getting $5 a foot in rent, so $5,500 for a two-bedroom. So those rents are so high that they make up for the cost of land and the impact fees and cost of construction. To the mayor's question, I think, one, there's a very important political statement you're setting to the investment community. If five members of the City Council were to say, older product, you know, you're going to have a cap for a short period of time, that shows that there is some willingness on this council to put a cap on housing, right? If you talk to the investment community, not just referring to Capital One, Bank of America, Wells Fargo, the folks you go to to get a 65% loan-to-value loan, a traditional loan, I'm talking about the mezzanine financing, the folks in the middle who are putting in the equity, who expect a 10% to 12% return. That's how a lot of projects are funded in the City of Sacramento. They will go away. They'll cross the border and go into the City of West Sacramento where there's no rent control.
Is that the average return expected by an institutional investor?
It varies. Vice Mayor, it's a great question. What we're seeing in core communities in the Bay Area where jobs are aplenty is about 6% to 8%. In the City of Sacramento, where communities that have made, put a drop in the bucket in housing, but there's a lot of work left, we're just on the edge of making a big difference. It's getting closer to 8% to 10% to 12% of preferred return.
Does that represent risk in the market here?
Absolutely.
From a collapse or something else?
Absolutely. You can capitalize on a short-term return, but you know what, the long-term may not be there.
And then the last question about what should we be doing around creating more affordable housing? The mixed income is obviously something we care about.
Yeah, I think, I'll just give you a direct example. Right now, we're under construction in Folsom with 140 units, TOD right next to the light rail, 100 of which are affordable, 40 are market rate, mixed-use. So that's a mixed-income project, something I think the majority or all the council would like to see here. We're starting construction in Roseville in about two months. We're starting construction in Rockland on about 300 units in five months. We own seven prime parcels on J Street. We own land all throughout the central core. We could probably make market-rate projects work, but the reason we can't make affordable projects work here is there's no gap funding. The gap funding we're getting across California is about $50,000 to $100,000 per affordable unit in a loan that's paid at the end of a cycle, whether it's 15 or 30 years. But the answer to your question is, we need money. And your idea about reducing impact fees is a great idea. We need to make sure it doesn't trigger prevailing wage because that would be an added cost, but that's definitely worth exploring, as is your 18-month term, which we're doing in other parts of the state.
Has the discussion around rent control chilled your ability to move those projects in the core that you were referring to?
Absolutely. And for us, we're lucky because we're internally financed and we're fifth-generation Sacramentans, the founder of our company is. But to the S6s of the world, and I'll use names because they're in the paper, to the Avalon Bays, the others who are building 400, 500-unit high-rises, they're telling us they won't come here until this discussion is settled.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there other members? Let me, I know I want to summarize here very briefly. Look, we have a lot of work to do. And as I said, if I bring back an ordinance, it would not be till after November and we get some clarity on the statewide issue. But this is, I think it's been a great hearing. I think that there is a lot to work with here. But this is the part of the hearing, Vice Mayor Hanson touched on it with Mr. Zahadani as well, who I believe is an expert and knows his business, good guy, that really is the heart of it. And Mr. Wood, Josh Wood, asked the question, paraphrased just a little bit here, said something to the effect, if a short-term solution destroys our ability to solve the long-term problem, the short-term solution is not worth it, I think is essentially what it is you said. And so when I asked Mr. Brown, who is a respected, one of the most respected housing developers in the city, Brown Construction, on the board of Region Business, done a ton of big projects, La Valencia, the Press Building, West Sac City Hall, et cetera, whether or not it would make a difference that any proposal outright exempted new construction by only putting the temporary cap on units 20 years or older? And I asked it a couple of times. He said, yes, that would make a difference. And Mr. Zahadani says, well, if I'm paraphrasing, but the way that I took it is that, but there's a psychological issue here to the REITs and the investors, right? They hear it and they say, oh my God, camel's nose under the tent. If they do it for units 20 years or older, how do we know they're not going to do it for new construction? So I want to just clarify that my concept, that isn't a formal proposal yet, would exempt new construction. Not only would it exempt new construction, but it would put a sunset for the period of emergency here for three years on those limited number of units. And so just to boil down what the question here for all of us is, if a temporary cap would provide real relief to thousands of people, and if we could guarantee, and I understand that distrust about temporary, by the way, I've been in government a long time myself. I get it. I'm acknowledging it. But if we could guarantee temporary, there are things like the city charter and other ways to not allow a future city council to upend it. And if there were a way to deal with that psychological problem because you were outright exempting new construction and we could protect a lot of people, why wouldn't that be something that we might consider? And by the way, not alone. Because our prior workshop talked about the desperate need for more housing subsidy. We do have Measure U on the ballot. The majority of council supported putting that out there. And we intend to create a housing trust fund, we've been providing that public subsidy, plus the additional resources from the state. And then, of course, I have asked, and I want to repeat it, that within 30 to 60 days, this is, that the manager and the staff, Mr. Jasso, come back. We've pre-reviewed this, so this isn't a surprise. We've talked about this together. Come back with ordinances that would reduce plan review time by 25%. They would implement the by-right state law SB 35 that would allow housing to get built faster. They would guarantee shorter turnarounds. They would waive impact fees for affordable housing and propose to do the same for moderate-income housing to potentially reduce or eliminate parking requirements or return expense, especially for infill where you're close to transit lines. So there's a lot to work with. And to Mr. Gette, Mr. Hanson, and Mr. Jennings specifically, but to the entire council, I think that they're, my opinion, that there's really something interesting to work with, especially around this 18-month lease idea. Because if you could, and I don't know whether we could, but if you could achieve some form of rent stability for the people that we're worried about, we're all worried about and trying to protect within that kind of a construct, I don't know that it's enough, but within that kind of construct, maybe there's something that we can work with together. So let's take a breath. Let's take a breath. Let's not put, take our foot off the gas here in terms of the sense of urgency here in all three categories. And let's come back and take some real action here that is going to continue the boom and the renaissance in Sacramento and at the same time grapple with those numbers that are also keeping me up and I hope you up at night as well. 47,000 people, limited income, paying 30% or more in their rent. 26,200 people paying 50% or more of their limited income on rent. We can do this, Sacramentans, and tonight is a good start. If there's nothing further, we will now go to council ideas and questions. Thank you.
I do have public comment for matters not on the agenda.
I understand. I'm going to do council ideas and questions first. Well, we could do public comment on items not on the agenda. I'm going to ask you, if people have spoken on this housing issue, I'm going to not call you up for public comment on matters not on the agenda. You've had your time. It's 10 minutes to 10, and we're going to recess this hearing as quickly and as reasonably as possible. It's been five hours. I think that's reasonable. I'm sorry. It's the way it is.
I do have 15 speakers. I believe some have left. I have Wanda, David Schwegel, Dietrich Lockhart, Laura Hansen. You'll wave. Thank you, Wanda.
Thank you, Wanda. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Come on, David. Come on up. If you haven't, if you didn't speak during the regular session, we'd be happy to hear you, okay?
Ready?
Yes.
All right. Greetings Sacramento City Council. David Schwegel, U.S. High-Speed Rail Association, where we support building a whole ton of housing, especially near train stations, while combating the harmful effects of gentrification. Think a unified and prosperous Northern California mega-region. Six years ago, the High-Speed Rail Authority met in these very council chambers deciding whether to build north or south first.
Let's stop the time for one second. It's okay. I know people are exiting and really appreciate it. Thank you. If we could try to exit quietly, thank you. Thank you, Bob. Thank you. We'll just, we just want to hear the testimony. You're all good. You're all good. Welcome to be here. Go ahead. Please, please.
Continue? Okay.
Yes.
So six years ago, the High-Speed Rail Authority Board of Directors met in these very council chambers deciding whether to build north or south first. I said to build north so that we can see an explosion of new technologies in the Silicon Valley. Support San Jose in this effort. When these new tech firms seek breathing room, affordable real estate made possible by building a whole ton of new housing and an exceptional workforce, our region should come to mind immediately. Encourage the San Joaquin and Capital Quarter JPAs to get expedited and electrified passenger rail service as quickly as it is the next logical step to the Caltrain electrification. SMF ranked number one in customer service by JD Powers and Associates will provide congestion relief to the three-capacity-constrained Bay Area airports. Finally, let's engage in meaningful discussion. SMF, ranked number one in customer service by JD Powers and Associates, will provide congestion relief to the three-capacity-constrained Bay Area airports. Finally, let's engage in meaningful discussions with high-speed rail experts worldwide in San Jose next week on how we can best leverage these new technologies to bring prosperity to our region. It took considerable negotiation with the association leaders in Washington, D.C., to locate a conference whereby technical tours of the nation's first true high-speed rail project could be included. They agreed to it. Perhaps someday, they will even consider having a conference right here in the capital city of the world's fifth-largest economy. But between now and then, let's get to work building a whole lot of new housing. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe these, Dietrich Lockhart, Laura Hanson.
Again, if you testified during the other hearing, we're not going to call you. We're going to wait till next week. It's almost 10 o'clock. We're done, okay?
Joan Marie, Patrick Bankert, Lambert Davis.
She's over here, girl. I'm going to kill you.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Council ideas and questions. Are there councilmen? Chenier?
Thank you, Mayor. Really quickly, this Friday night, Hollywood Park Ice Cream Social at Hollywood Park Elementary and Jumanji afterwards, 6:00 P.M.
Okay. Councilman Getta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We're going to have the District 6 movie night and resource fair at Artibio Guerrero Park. We're going to have our local police department, firefighters, community services, and a lot of good services out at Guerrero Park. We'll be showing the movie Coco at sundown, so come out and we'll have free popcorn. Also, we're going to have Back to the Neighborhood at the George Sims Community Center. Back to the Neighborhood, a lot of folks from Glen Elder, Avondale, and Southeast Village come out and catch up with the folks from the neighborhood. That's from 10 to 1. And also at Oki Park on December, September 14th, we're going to have the District 6 movie night, showing Peter Rabbit with the College Glen Neighborhood Association. Hope to see you there. Thanks.
Good. Thank you, Councilmember Chenier. So we do have one member of the public who had not testified previously, was out for a minute. We're going to call up Mr. Davis, is it? You come on up, Mr. Davis. Go ahead, Rick. While Mr. Jennings.
Here, while he's coming up. We're going to have a cleanup. We don't, not, no movie available, but we will have a cleanup. If you want to come to the Lewis Didion Park. It's going to happen this Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00. You can help us do painting, cleaning, weeding, light weeding, of course, just to make the playground better for the kids and the families in the community. It's our opportunity to take care of our parks, and our Parks Commissioner, Devin Lavelle, is going to be out there with us with lots of volunteers. We hope you'll join us 1:00 to 4:00 this Saturday.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Davis, you get the last word tonight, sir. You got, and you have two minutes.
Okay. It won't take that long. First of all, I didn't step out. I've been here since 5:30.
Okay, well, welcome to you. Go right ahead. Come on.
First of all, I'm here, and really, I'm here to talk to the mayor and the city manager. I've talked to everybody else. This is about the Rails Grant Program. There were some, when we submitted this application, and by the way, I was told about this program by a great person that's no longer with us. His name was John Silva. I'm going to keep mentioning him because he was a wonderful human being.
Late John Silva, yes, we miss him.
Yeah, he was the one who actually introduced us. It'd be nice for the city manager to listen, too, because I'm talking to him.
Hey, Mr. Davis. We've heard you, but if you want to set up a meeting with my team.
I've been here five and a half hours.
Go ahead.
And I was, I heard someone say that I had stepped out. I didn't. I was here.
Hey, go ahead.
And so what I wanted to say, if people could be quiet up here, is we are a, well, what I will do is say that this is for you, Mayor, to look at. Someone on your staff are in this process, when I submitted this application, they have altered and sabotaged and deliberately altered my application, which eliminated me. This is a smoking gun for you and the city manager to look at.
If you get to the clerk, I will look at it personally, and I will make sure that